I'm going to call this meeting to order. And at this time, we are so graced by the presence of not one but two reverends. But I'd like to call on Claude Axel, Reverend Axel. Would you lead us in our invocation this morning?
You can approach.
Shall we this time bow a heads and prayer? Eternally God our Father, how excellent is your great name. You excellent in every sense of the word. And we come on this morning to ask our blessings, ask thy considerations, as well as ask for understanding in this meeting of our commissioners. We pray for those who will approach this bench and share their concerns. God, I ask a special prayer on Corpus Christi, Texas. We, our name bears body of Christ. So God, we pray that not only our commissioners, but all of the other leaders of Corpus Christi will continue to do all that they can to honor and glorify and dignify our name, the body of Christ. These blessings we ask in the strong and perfect name of our Lord and Savior Jesus. In your great name, we praise you and say amen.
Amen. Would you lead us in the pledge, Commissioner?
I pledge the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to note the date, which is May the 8th, 2019. We're at 901 North Leopard, 3rd floor of the New Oasis County Courthouse. And for the clerk, I do certify that the quorum is present. All commissioners and myself are here. At this time, commissioners, I'd take a motion to approve the minutes.
Judge, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I've just noticed that we're having problems getting the minutes. I mean, this has been like the 3rd or 4th time. Is there something going on that we're not getting? And then they're very general. They're not very detailed. Am I the only one that sees there's a problem there?
I haven't read them either, and I'm not going to approve the minutes. I haven't read them. So...
Okay. I think that's, you're hearing the concern. If you might take that back to the clerk and let her know that from the timeliness aspect to possibly the substantive aspect, that maybe we would like, you know, further discussion.
They got 2 weeks, and if they're not ready, shouldn't put them on the agenda.
So can I have a motion to table then?
I don't think they're any less detailed than I realize. I mean, they look up, because we don't, they don't go into, I don't see any less detail.
They don't, but I've just never seen minutes so general. I mean, I would just think they would be a little more detailed. I'm just making a point, they need to be more detailed. Maybe you guys don't agree, and that's fine.
No, you just asked, did they look less detailed? I was just answering, they look the same to me. That was all I was saying.
But they're not attached to the agenda. We don't get them. And I can see that happening maybe once, but not this many times.
Fair enough. Commissioners, at this time, I'll entertain any series of motions. Do I have a motion to approve or a motion to table?
Well, I move that we hold off on the minutes until next meeting, and then we approve all of them at one time.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Hearing a motion is a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Pose same sign.
No.
Okay, I've got one no.
Fine.
All right. At this time, we are going to move to adopting resolutions, proclamations, and orders. And we have 2, Tyner, that are important this week.
And I believe we have some people here that may want to stand with me for National Children's Mental Health Awareness Week.
We would welcome them. Court recognizes Judge Timothy McCoy, Court at Law Number 5. And probably, would you like to introduce your staff? This is your staff?
No, no, it's just me today.
Okay.
We do have our drug court coordinator.
I was noticing, yes, okay. And the rest of you are from M-H-I-D then? Wonderful, welcome. We can't say enough about the good work that you do, but when we talk about children and adolescents, we're specifically and particularly touched. So, thank you.
Judge, are you here for anything else on the agenda, or just this?
I am, asking for money again.
Okay, we can move the judge up. Let's go ahead and let Tyner read the resolution. Let's let Tyner read the resolution, and then we would love to honor all of you that, in just a moment, by asking you to join us here for a photo afterwards, to honor this special week. Tyner?
Whereas, ensuring the mental health of our children is essential to their growth and development. Whereas, according to the United States Department of Health and Human Services, the prevalence of mental health disorders in children and youth, to the point in which their life is significantly impacted, is estimated to be approximately 20% during a given year. Whereas, learning to recognize the early warning signs of mental health problems and where to obtain necessary assistance and treatment gives children and adolescents better opportunities to lead full and productive lives. Now therefore, be it resolved that the New Oasis County Commissioners Court hereby recognizes May 5th through 11th, 2019, as National Children's Mental Health Awareness Week in New Oasis County, and encourages all citizens to work together to raise awareness of the mental health needs of the children of New Oasis County.
So moved.
Hi, our motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion at this point, commissioners? Well, again, I just want to say, this court has already expressed on numerous occasions its commitment to seeing that we improve the quality health outcomes of our citizens. But in particularly, I'm specifically going to focus this fiscal year coming up on children and adolescents in the behavioral health arena and the intellectual disability arena. So I hope I can work with all of you as partners and as experts in the field to help us come up with our 5 goals for the next 5 years that I keep talking about. And as I said, I mean, this is the most vulnerable, besides the elderly, our children are the most vulnerable citizens of our community. And I hope to learn more about this from you. I'm really glad that you're here, and I hope that we can spread the awareness. Just from my knowledge, is there a color? Is there something that we're doing ribbon-wise, so that we can be supportive of you all this week? Ladies?
The color's green.
The color's green, easy. One of my favorite colors. Okay. So, the color's green, so we'll make sure that we promote that. Thanks again. Do you all want to take a picture at this time? You can come close to the podium. Also want to recognize that Commissioner Gonzalez holds like 10 different certifications, but counseling is one of them, and so he's one of you guys.
Special person to be a counselor.
And I'm just going to center up, just so y'all can see me here.
Stand up.
I'll stand up, but you all can center up and stand up. Do we, Tyner, would you be so good? Okay, great. Take our picture.
Okay. Can everybody see me?
Y'all get in. Don't worry. Don't worry about it.
Can y'all see me?
Can you get them all?
Yep. Okay, y'all ready? 1, 2, 3. Let's do 1 more. 1, 2, 3. Got it.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank y'all so very, very much.
Thank you for all you do, ladies. Appreciate it. And John.
Yeah, I do too. Don't worry.
That's nice.
Judge McCoy, if we'll finish the second proclamation, then we can advance your agenda item to make your time efficient. Tyner, the next one is Stop the Bleed Day, which is officially May 23rd, but we're going to honor it today.
You do need to vote on it.
Oh, we didn't vote. Okay. Having her discussion and a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye for the resolution? Aye? Pose same sign. Thank you lauda.
And Judge, on this one, we have some representatives from the Coastal Bend Regional Advisory Council that may want to come stand with me.
Great. Hi there, good morning.
I'll go ahead and begin, Judge.
Please.
Whereas, acts of terrorism and unstable individuals can lead to casualties with massive bleeding, where if responses delayed can result in death. May 23rd, 2019, is National Stop the Bleed Day. President Barack Obama's Policy Directive for National Preparedness, Presidential Policy Directive 8, targets preparedness as a shared responsibility of the government, the private and nonprofit sectors, and individual citizens. Whereas, the general public learns and performs CPR, the public must learn proper bleeding control techniques, including how to use their hands, dressings, and tourniquets. Victims can die quickly from uncontrolled bleeding within 5 to 10 minutes. BleedingControl.org, an initiative of the American College of Surgeons and the Hartford Consensus, along with private and nonprofit partners, can help prepare you in the event you are witness to one of these unspeakable events. Whereas, the Coastal Bend Regional Advisory Council is partnered with BleedingControl.org to teach the Stop the Bleed training to the citizens of the Coastal Bend. Free training will be offered on May 23rd at Delmar College for the general public. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of New Oasis County hereby recognizes National Stop the Bleed Day, May 23rd, 2019, in New Oasis County.
Thank you, and welcome. We appreciate, you know, having an awareness about this issue. And it doesn't matter, it seems, what day you turn on the television. This morning, I turned it on, and it was a Colorado shooting. So I'm glad to make this issue much more aware at this courthouse, and I hope that maybe we can have some participants there for you at Delmar on May 23rd. And if there's anything else you'd like to add at this time?
Just, morning Judge.
Good morning, Hillary.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for the resolution. We are committed to teaching this in the region. We represent 12 counties, including New Oasis. We have over 100 instructors to date. We've already taught, I think, about 3,000 citizens. And as Tyner alluded to, the 23rd, we're going to offer 4 classes, and we're going to promote that through local media, to have as many people show up as possible. Given that someone, you know, can bleed to death within 5 minutes, teaching the public to be the initial responder before, you know, EMS can arrive on scene, I think we've seen that has proven valuable throughout Vegas and the Pulse nightclub attacks. And in any day emergency, whether it's a hunting emergency, or, you know, falling through a glass window, or anything like that. So, we're committed to it. We have plenty of instructors. We'd be happy to come and provide you and your staff the training here in the courthouse also.
That would be great.
That'd be awesome. Could we do that?
I think all the deputies, Deputy, I mean, is that something that you're normally, Deputy Vasquez, is that something you're normally trained on?
Sheriff over there.
On the bleeding? Okay.
But where's, let's set that up for our, like, county employees, and I'd like to go myself personally.
Julie, that'd be great. Let's do that.
Hour and a half for the class, so if you can allot that, just let us know how many people and a date and time, and we'll make it happen.
We need to get, I guess Julie, right, would be the one to set that up?
Julie's listening, because we had this discussion yesterday.
Before you leave, Tyner, let's get her with Julie. Let's get this done. That's a great idea.
So Judge, 1 question, 1 comment real quick. So comment is, we had a little goody bag when we went to the Hurricane Conference last week, and one of the things I pulled out was, it looked like a watch, but apparently it was a little Stop the Bleed tourniquet kit.
It's a tourniquet, yes.
And so that was pretty neat to have that. I'd never seen that kind of presented as a part of that bag. And also, I had a question. So it used to be the old thinking, I guess, and maybe it's still current, that you had to release a tourniquet. Is that true? I mean, before, you would always hear, you don't want to leave a tourniquet on too long. Is it, stop it and just leave it?
They have taken battlefield practices that they've learned from Afghanistan and Iraq, and the American College of Surgeons has worked with trauma surgeons from the field in battle. They're now, actually, they have extended the amount of hours you can actually leave a tourniquet on for. So it's extended to 16.
16 hours.
Hours, actually, yeah.
Wow.
So you want it on as tight as possible, and you'll learn all of that in the class. We will also leave a bag for you with some supplies in it, to include chest seals, tourniquets, gauze, gloves, all of the things that you need, so...
Yeah, please make sure she didn't leave without talking to Julie. Let's get a date set for that.
Julie's outside. Sheriff's here, Sheriff Hooper. If you could help us, I think that's a wonderful exercise for everybody. I know, it sounds like you already have that kind of training for all peace officers, but maybe you could help by leading, you know, we could have some extra volunteers. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Yep, wonderful.
No, I wonder too, if we could, several of us do health fairs in our districts, I wonder if we could incorporate that. That would be kind of a neat thing to do too.
That's a great thing. And Martin, I thought I saw Martin here earlier, Longoria. Hi, Martin. Maybe for your Veterans Health Fair? Most of your vets probably are also trained in this, but again, this is, we see so many different ages of our veterans.
I've actually got a health fair coming up on May 15th at Veterans Memorial in conjunction. Maybe, I don't know how you could incorporate some of that, maybe as a booth, or, I don't, I'm not sure how we would do it, but boy, that's a great, that'd be a great addition to our health fairs.
And we'll be at the New Oasis County Health Fair also, so we could also work with them. The key is that we need to really have an estimate of how many people we would have trained, because you have to have a ratio of 8 students to 1 instructor, so that the skills testing can really be observed, and, you know, they can give the best instruction possible.
Most of the health fairs aren't for training, they're just for providing information. So you set up a booth, and, you know, and I thought you were going to some of the health fairs, I thought I seen you guys today.
Yes, we have been at the New Oasis County Health Fair every year for the past decade, and we usually...
We have other health fairs that we do in different areas, and maybe you can attend those health fairs.
Yeah.
Do you train there, or do you just set up for information kind of?
Usually, we usually support the Friends and Family CPR class that they have in the health fair back in the corner. But we usually give information on, you know, disaster preparedness. This year, you know, water safety, we have had a lot of drownings in the, at the beaches, the local beaches, so we want to get as much information out on an array of, you know, injury prevention programs, as well as disaster preparedness. A lot of the cross-section of the society have special needs during disasters, which may only be as simple as, you know, evacuation or transportation. So we promote having them sign up in the STEER program, so that they can get connected with resources during disasters. So if we, we can certainly do it at the health fairs, we just need to know how many people.
Well, or, yeah, and I mean, you came just to get a resolution, we're putting you to work, and we appreciate that.
That's okay.
But I guess I'm just trying to figure if there's a way to set it up as a, you know, more of a booth to promote, because none of us ever know how many are going to show up at these health fairs. Sometimes it's 50, sometimes it's 250, we just don't have a clue. But if there's a way to set it up that would help create more awareness for you and what you're trying to do, and to help our community, and to set that up as kind of a vendor with just an information booth, if that's not something you're geared for, that's okay. If that's something you are, then certainly we'd love to have you. And again, we don't know how many are going to show up, you know?
We can do that, and we can just take as many instructors as can volunteer, because they are all volunteer. This is all done on their spare time. We could take a pool of instructors with us, and then it's just the first come, first served. And we can do as many classes as we can.
Okay. Well, if you'll leave your contact information with Tyner, I'll get you in touch with the person who coordinates the health fairs for all of us, and then maybe y'all can, it may be too quick to do it on my next one, but it'd be great, I think, if we could figure out how to incorporate that, because that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to promote community wellness and awareness in our communities, within our precincts. And it was actually, I stole it from Commissioner Gonzalez, it was, he was the one doing it a lot when I got here, and I asked him if it was okay if I stole it, and he said it was fine, because we all want to help our constituents. So if there's a way to do that, I think this is super, and I didn't mean to spend all this much time on a resolution, but this is very important.
Well, no, I, you know, we've talked about this, it's a technique that I learned at the Port of Corpus Christi, about safety training before every meeting. We didn't get it on the agenda, because we're actually forming our protocols, but we want to have a safety briefing before every single meeting, and that includes, hey, where the defibrillator is. You know, we should have a tourniquet here, we should have, it's the panic that gets you, right? And it's not the idea that we don't have trained personnel here. But if you don't know who is in charge of calling 911, if you don't know who is going to be the person responsible for getting the defibrillator off the wall, then all of the training is for naught, right? So I think we need to practice what we preach, and I think what you see here is there's a genuine interest in what you're bringing, because it's new, and it's something none of us had ever heard of before. And so we thank you for that, of course. I know you as well, as promoting all of our Emergency Trauma Network, and your coordination with all of the trauma centers, first responders, healthcare providers, and we're just, we believe that our trauma network needs to be of the highest order and excellence, and you bring that to bear, so. So thank you so much. And with that, commissioners, we've had plenty of discussion, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes. The motion was by Commissioner Chesney, the second was by Commissioner Gonzalez.
Y'all want to take a picture? Ladies, want to take a picture?
They may not want to.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate that. We appreciate that. Okay. In the interest of Judge McCoy's time, it's time for public comment, but I'm happy to move up the item that Judge McCoy has. The only concern I have, commissioners, is that I had a request, Tyner, item number on the consent, number, letter N, I believe is in response to Commissioner, I'm sorry, Judge McCoy's Family Drug Court, but I also have a note that there might be a concern and might want to postpone. Commissioners?
I don't know, do you want to?
Do I have a, do I have, I have a note here only to table?
So Judge McCoy's item is actually M-N-N.
Okay.
M is what he's going to be talking about, and we are going to table that for next court. There's no timeline on that. It's basically a resolution, and that was a mistake on my department's part, where we worded the recommendation incorrectly. So we will fix that on the next agenda.
Got it.
So that is 3-N.
So you want to table 3-N?
As in Nancy. We're going to table N at the appropriate time, commissioners, don't worry about that. At this moment, I'm advancing our consent agenda for the limited purpose of item number M, letter M.
Do it. Do the whole thing.
So, we have the opportunity to apply for a grant through the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs for the Family Drug Court. It is a 3-year grant. We can apply for up to $750,000, but it does require a 25% match, that's just why Judge McCoy is here this morning. We do have the option to do in-kind match for this project, so we will be working on, hopefully, doing that. But he can speak more to how the program will work and what we will be applying for.
Okay. And I think at this point, Judge, what I'm going to have you do is just give us all the background, and then we can take the consent agenda item at that time, but just for your purposes, you can get everything out that you want to say.
Okay. So, this grant is again for our drug court program, where it's for the parents of the, in our CPS cases. Now, I've been trying and doing the best I can, along with our court staff and volunteers, and to really get this program off the ground, and I'm doing it for a number of reasons. One, New Oasis County is one of the only counties of this size in the state that doesn't have a thriving drug court program. You know, if you go to San Antonio, Austin, you know, all these counties of El Paso, they all do have these programs, and they're grant-funded, like we're trying to do to get ours started. Now, there's a number of things that drug courts do, and one, they help me out, and they help save the county money, and I'll put it to y'all that way. You know, right now, over the last couple of years, we'd have 4 or 5 people, 6 clients going through our drug court team, and that's due in large part to the grant we got to fund Ms. Moogie's salary and to help coordinate these cases. Now, 16 people in drug court, we see those clients every 2 weeks. We have 1 attorney there representing their interests, and then, of course, the drug court staff and the judge. So those 16 people, those 16 cases, one, they move a lot quicker. Another thing it does is it takes the burden off of the bench docket, to where I don't have to hear those cases as quickly, or as often. One of the reasons why our county is one of the best in the state with regards to months in care and moving cases quicker, and the number, or getting cases resolved quicker, is because I don't necessarily go by the statutory guidelines, meaning, I always go by the statutory guidelines, but I have more hearings in between. And drug court program, the drug court programs can move up that process and help out with that process, and again, be more cost-efficient. The caseload in County Court 5 has gone up, not just double, triple, probably quadrupled since I took the bench. I'm hearing cases where I used to have 3 or 4 cases on a docket in the morning and 3 or 4 in the afternoon, now it's more like 8 or 10. I don't have any control over that. The county attorneys file the cases, and the cases that are coming in, I'd say, and I liken it to when I did, you know, criminal defense work, 95% of them have to do with drugs, drug abuse. Drug abuse leads to a number of things. It leads to homelessness, it leads to lack of, you know, lack of housing, lack of employment, which in turn leads to abuse and neglect, family violence. You know, all these types of things are all tied to the drug abuse issue. And the vast majority of these new cases I'm seeing aren't your, you know, your straight, you know, physical abuse or type cases, it is the drug-related homelessness, drug-positive babies, you know, stuff where we, the court has no choice but to intervene and try to handle the situation. In my experience, the vast majority of recidivism cases that we see all have to do with drug abuse. Now with, you know, a thriving drug court program, we can keep these parents and keep them in, keep eyes on them, in many cases, a lot longer than you could through a normal CPS case where you have a 1-year timeline. So there's, again, a number of reasons why this program, we need to get this program off the ground. Not only will it serve our community, serve our children, you know, numbers show that reunification is the best thing for children, and that's what I work for. Being with family is the best thing for children, not, and that's not anecdotal, it shows that children just do better. I mean, long-term, if we can fix the issue and get these children back with their parents and back with their family. And these drug, this drug court program, we're trying to get it off the ground, so that's what we can do.
Are you asking us for money, or are you asking to approve your grant?
Well, okay, so this grant is a 3-year grant, okay? It is a, I believe the total number is 750,000. Now what that's going to go to funding is our drug testing, our wraparound services. Again, that's not what we're asking for. That's what the grant is for. Wraparound services, you know, parenting coaching, drug testing. Right now, those services, we have to rely on CPS or the department for, and they're overburdened as it is. Caseloads aren't just going up in New Oasis County, they're going up all over the state. I have theories why that's happening, but, so, we don't want to rely on them, 1, because I want it to be independent. I want it to be a fair process through the court where, you know, again, where it's unbiased. Not only that, but their lack of resources will slow our cases down sometimes, because we can't get those services that we need. So we're trying to get grants to fund those services, as well as a number of other things that go with drug court programs. Now, the matching funds will be roughly, what, I think it was a quarter?
It says that it's an in-kind match or a 25% cash.
Right. So, what we're, another thing we're going to, in-kind is great, okay? Because I think anybody that isn't salaried necessarily can go into that. A number of resources that the court uses can go into that in-kind portion. I believe the Associate Judge in court, she handles the bulk of our drug court programs. I think that salary can go, it's not a salary, but that hourly could perhaps qualify for that in-kind.
Maria, you'll be helping to identify that which would be appropriate for the in-kind, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So Natalie in my office has been working with Amanda and kind of working on those details. So like even our staff time and the reporting?
Right.
Sure, we'll count towards the 250,000.
So for that 750,000, it comes out to 62,500 dollars per basically fiscal year that we will need to match this grant.
Of in-kind or of dollar for dollar? Dollars plus in-kind, or?
25%.
Well, it's the same amount. So either we provide 62,500 cash or 62,500 in-kind service. So either we provide 62,500 cash or 62,500 in-kind.
Well, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't see, I mean, I don't see a problem with that if it's, you know, if we've always done in-kind, you know, no problem. I mean, I moved it, we go ahead and go for the grant.
Wait a minute. If we're going to have to match 62,500 every year, where's that money coming from?
Well, and that's what we're saying, we can do it either in cash, but we really are pushing for doing that in in-kind services. So in other words, documenting everybody's time, because this court, I think, is, they meet, what, every two weeks?
Yes.
So all of that time that is dedicated, so that's however many hours that they spend on working this project, as well as like even my staff's time on reporting requirements, getting, you know, Commissioners' court meetings, all of those dollars, actually, all of those hours.
But will you get a choice of in-kind? You'll get a, you'll get a choice?
Yes.
And my other question is, you say we're the only county that hasn't done it, so what's the success in the ones that have?
Well, I-
Do we know that?
I can tell you that of the limited drug court that we do, the success is overwhelming. And we can't, we can only do, I don't know the statistics, I can just tell you from personal experience, the cases that we had in drug court resolved themselves more times than not because of the extra eyes and the extra time spent by both the county attorney and the judge and the staff. And it is, it's highly successful. I will never forget some of the stories and the successes that came out of drug court. I'll never forget this one couple, and I don't know their name, and I don't mean to, but they talked to me and they educated me on heroin use, and they were addicted to heroin, and they went through their entire story about how heroin was just this vicious cycle that you just couldn't get off because if you got off, it made you sick, and they went through this whole thing. At the end of the day, they ended up getting their kids back, and they got off heroin. And not just because of drug court, but certainly because every two weeks, they'd come in and I'd sit and talk to them and meet with them and all the other people, wasn't just the judge, and Judge McCoy will tell you the same thing, it's everybody around it. So to be able to only come up with 62,000, especially, and Judge McCoy, I talked to him about this, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago or whenever it was, but I didn't even know the in-kind part. I was already looking to figure out where to come up with the cash for it because I think it's such a good program. But if in-kind is a part of it, then, and if Judge Huerta, for example, her part of it, I mean, she, she doesn't make 62,000, but it's pretty close, or 69,000, but with all the hours she does work now, it's pretty close. So I'm 100% in favor of this, and if I've got to figure out how to come up with some funds, I'll figure out how to come up with some funds on this because, especially for 750,000.
The, you know, we put that dollar amount, and I agree, I mean, this budget's tight, but let's talk about how does this translate into savings? Do we know, or maybe, maybe you've covered it already, a dollar amount that this, I mean, we're putting in this much investment, but how does that translate into money saved down the line? The district attorney talks about that a lot with different policy decisions he's making that this can add up and save the county hundreds of thousands of dollars. So what is your estimate, or if you don't have it, can you get it to us by the next meeting when we do vote on?
Okay, well, this is, that's a tough question, okay? And I'll tell you why. Okay, so like, for example, I'll get, have a year, let's say, where I have 250 conservatorship cases filed, and the next year, that number could go up to 300 or 400, which is what's been happening. And actually, to be, you know, last year, our number dropped a little bit. So you do have some ebbs and flows. So when I'm handling that amount of cases, the bulk of the funds that go into those are your attorney's fees, okay? Now, I don't, I don't have control over, well, I have control over the attorney's fees, but I don't have control over, some of those fees just have to be paid, okay? So when I, when you look at my yearly budget or yearly run of my attorney's fees, you may see a $100,000 spike, and that's directly attributable back to, back to the number of cases. Now, I think my record speaks for itself as with regards to the number of cases and actually saving. Over the years, I've been very good as far as historically with my attorney's fees. However, that's where you're going to see the backend savings on this case. For example, add up 16 clients in drug court. Every hearing that you have, for example, wouldn't you have an attorney present for the parties, is, you know, I have, there's a flat fee right now, let's just say 2, 4, 6, $800. On top of that, if there's more work that goes into it, it could be higher than that. So add that up every two weeks for a year, or let's just say once a month for a year, and see how that translates back to attorney's fee savings. Again, the drug court, we have one lawyer there that handles the interests of the parents. His fees are generally about $150 every drug court session. So that's the backend where you're going to see savings, and I think you're going to see a lot of savings. It kind of goes back to a lot of these positions I'm asking for, for example, in the guardianship situation where, you know, that money upfront is, there's no question it's going to save money where I normally would have to point lawyers on it. So I mean, this is something that could save $200,000 in a budget year on attorney's fees where y'all may not see it, but that's-
And that's why I was getting at, I mean, if, because I agree, we need to be careful in my full of dollars. I do love that 25% match, that's a big, big savings for us when someone else is bringing in the funding. But that's why I wanted to kind of justify and see is that if we can expect or estimate that there is going to be some sizable amount of savings compared to what, even if we had to put in $62,000 in actual cash, which we know it's not, it's probably going to be a lot less half, who knows, that that's going, that's going to be much more of an investment and savings in the long term.
Well, and Judge Chesney taught me this with regards to saving money in these cases. And it's not only just good for the parents, but it also is good with, in the, in the long term, is hear these cases, keep eyes on them, get the cases moving, don't, you know, don't continue stuff, keep your dockets moving because then they get resolved faster. And you don't have parents getting their rights terminated or, you know, or long-drawn-out cases, and it works. And that's what we're trying to do here is-
And so before, it used to be one caseworker? Is it still just one that's assigned from CPS that works drug court, or is it, when I was a caseworker, it was only one, so is it still just one handling that case?
There's generally two, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, I always see two or three people there depending on, you know, if it's a services case, the services coordinator will be there and-
You know, Commissioner, you got a good point, you know, but I think we're missing the big picture here, you know, because we're talking about attorney's fees, you know, and I understand we, we cut back on attorney's fees, we save. But I think the big picture here, me being in alcohol and drug and trauma, kind of, I'm not an expert almost, I would say, but I think we're looking, missing a picture of the long term because if we save, I always say, if I save one kid, I've done a real good job. I used to try to save 10 or 15 or 20, but now if I save one, I'm doing good. But because, you know, that one child or five kids that you save in the long run, they're not going to be housed at the sheriff's room and board, and that's going to save money for the county.
Right.
Parents that you turn around are not going to be housed at the sheriff's room and board because, and that's going to save money for the county. I think we have to look at it in the long term of how many can we save, how many can we change, how many, you know, and it's, it's about what's going to cost us down the road.
Absolutely, I agree.
One time now, could be three times more, six months from now. So I think if we save one, or we save two, we've done a lot, you know, and I think we saved a lot for the county.
Absolutely.
You know, because now nobody has to deal with them, right? And hopefully, by dealing with that one child, you got the, you'll save the parents.
Well, and I see that all the time. You see funding get cut in one area, you know, mental health issues, and it shows up in another, or five, or, you know.
To me, I don't know what a child's worth, but to me, they're worth $60,000 though. But anyway, I make a motion.
Well, and I think I can, I think it's a good idea to look at best practices, and I can only speak for Bear County Commissioner, that's the only one that I'm familiar with, and I did a little research while the judge was talking, and I do have some good information I'm going to forward to you. But since 2004, they've graduated 800 people from their family drug court, and it really is quite telling because, you know, if you just take, let me just look here, you know, let's take the last calendar years, they had 32 graduates, but they combined for a total of 218 different times of arrest. So when you can graduate somebody and keep them clean and sober, then, as you point out, you know, the turnstile, you know, stops, right, the vicious cycle. So I think Bear County is probably a good place for us to look, and I always encourage, Maria, anytime we have these types of grants, we're all learning how to, how people like to receive information. I'm a lot like Commissioner Vaughn, it's always great to have backup. So this is a great, I think, a win-win for us. I think that what I look at is the, you know, cost, the CBA, the cost-benefit analysis is there. But it's always a great idea, just do a little research. Bear County has been doing it since 2004, so let's go ahead and get Bear County statistics. They're very different population in size, but very similar in socio-demographic, so we can make some correlations there. And I think, look at the success rate because we're, as you know, we're held to task for the fiscal appropriations. But I think that if you work hard, you can allocate a 100% in-kind match, and that's what we should work towards.
I would move passage, Judge.
I have a comment. Judge, I'm not against this. I mean, I want a good program for the kids and the parents, I do, but I think this year, more than any year, we're going to be so ever mindful of our budget. And I am, Judge, I couldn't have said it better, but I like backup. I like success. I like to see what the program has, has done. So I'm not against it, but I am concerned about money, of course, but I know that y'all need it.
Well, we, I've been to Bear County and sit with their program. I mean, again, it's, well-
You know, if you don't have intervention, intervention, those are the keys. You know, we forget about prevention intervention, we shouldn't forget about those things. But that's all that's going to happen.
No, thank you. And by the way, Bear County gets $3 million, so this year-
We're working towards that.
Yeah, right, right. So anyway, but, yeah, just saying, as I say, but congratulations for seeking these types of grants out. Thank you, Maria, for fostering and nurturing them. Bring us the backup to the county judge's office, and I'll make sure it gets disseminated, actually through Tynor. And I think that's a, that's a good background information. Are there any other questions? I'm going to go ahead and keep the consent agenda. Do you want to keep it together, or you want to go ahead and take it out?
I was just going to move passage.
All right, I'll take a motion. Do I have a motion? And a second by Commissioner Chesney. And since we've had good discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Okay, this grant will proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge, thank you, everybody.
Good luck.
And Judge, do you want to make a, can I make a motion to table three M's since we're talking about it?
Yes, that's a good idea. Let's go ahead and take, I'll take a second on that.
Second.
Got a motion to table three N, as in Nancy.
I think it was-
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
N?
I'm sorry.
My bad. So M, we just passed, N, right?
Yeah, N is in Nancy. All those in favor of tabling letter number N on the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That'll come back to us next time.
And then Judge, one of the things, in case anyone's here for this, they don't sit and waste, I would like to also make a motion to table on regular agenda four A4.
Give me just a second. Four, oh, that's the IB McGee?
Yes, the-
All right, we're going to-
And put that on for an executive session next time, please. Four A4. Table and put it on for executive session for the next meeting, please.
Okay, just in the interest of organization, I've got a motion to table. Do I have a second? Motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. We'll table item on regular agenda A4, in case anyone in the audience will take that up next time. Okay, now, moving back to the normal course of things. Edward, would you be so kind as to bring me the, it's already here?
Excuse me, Judge.
Oh. It's tricking me here. Okay. Mr. Watson? Good morning, sir.
And Judge and Commissioners, thank you for having me. My name is Brian Watson, and I'm a longtime resident on Corpus Christi, and I have a bit of good news for you. I learned that Abilene, City of Abilene, working with the Community Action Agency, is that the title of it? I'm not sure. Anyway, they have been able to locate and secure suitable housing for every homeless veteran in that entire city. And I've already begun gathering information. The state congressman from that area is a longtime friend of mine back when I lived in Abilene, so I think the stage has been set to improve the record across the state for dealing with that issue. So anyway, I also have some information here on, other than George H.W. Bush. I brought you all a little bit. Gosh, when was it, January, February, and I haven't been back since, but I have gathered some information about him that I gave you, and then there's some information here about his legacy, including the disastrous presidencies of son George W. Bush. So I hope you'll look at this. I have learned that you wholeheartedly unanimously endorsed the idea of renaming the Naval Air Station for George H.W. Bush. I'm entirely opposed to that. I served in the Navy, and I know how things get done, so it may not ever happen, but I don't know, other than to just maintain my position on it. And I have some more information from you, I'll leave with your-
Thank you. If you'll just leave it with Mr. Little here.
That'll be all right. Good enough, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just to remind the audience during public comment, there's no comment back from Commissioners' Court. I'm going to recognize Ian Vasey. He is the Director of the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Corporation. No worries, Ian, welcome. Glad to have you here this morning.
My apologies, Judge, I was outside talking to the other judge.
Okay.
The other judge. For the record, Ian Vasey with Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Corporation. I would like to put something in the record for Commissioners as well, if I can. Trying to figure, hanging on.
I'll pass it out.
We know the court is working on some things for the trafficure group Gulf Terminals, and I know Mr. Strawbridge, I'd like to cede some of my time to him as well, if that's possible. But the EDC has studied this at some length, and I know, Commissioner, as you were part of those discussions as well at the EDC Board of Directors, but we passed a resolution, which is a very unusual thing for an EDC to take a position against a project. But the applications that we've seen and the information that's been submitted to the state by this project give us some serious concerns about emissions, VOC issues, volatile organic compounds which endanger our ozone attainment. And this is one of those deals where they're just going to be able to vent off. We test so close to the limit on our ozone attainment that if a project like this puts enough VOCs into the air, and Mr. Culbertson, or, he hates it when I call him our resident aerospace engineer, but he really is one, looked at the airflow and things like that, and this brings, brings essentially VOCs right back onto shore, and it could cost us millions of dollars in investment, thousands of jobs. So we just want that in the record as well. And I could cede my, the rest of my time to Mr. Strawbridge.
Thank you. The court recognizes Chief Executive Officer of the Port of Corpus Christi, Sean Strawbridge, and with him is also Governmental Affairs Director Nelda Olivo. Hi, Nelda, good morning.
Morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Commissioners, good morning. Good to see you. Thank you for, Ian, for ceding some of your time. As a follow-on to Judge Lloyd Neill's letter to the GLO dated December 5th, and the subsequent resolution passed by this body in opposition of the Trafficura Texas Gulf Terminals project, I'm here to voice the Port of Corpus Christi's continued opposition of this project. And I just want to share with you some, four areas of why we are in opposition to this project. One is, we have issues with the Trafficura Texas Gulf Terminals Deepwater Port application and the opacity of that application. Two is, we have issues with the use of the proposed county property that we believe, Oasis County property, that we believe Trafficura is in need of a easement from this body in order for this project to go forward. Three is, issues that we have with Texas Gulf Terminal's proposed operations of a deepwater port and the location of it. And fourth is, issues that we have with the company behind the Deepwater Port Project Trafficura itself. And if I can just go into a little bit of detail on each one of those, again, starting with the actual application itself. The United States Army Corps of Engineers has determined that the Texas Gulf Terminal's application is incomplete because it does not include any information regarding impact to the aquatic environment, and the Corps has withdrawn one of the Texas Gulf Terminal's project applications for failure to provide required information. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service provided notification that the application is deficient because it provided an incomplete picture of the impacts of the project on several listed species and failed to provide restoration plans for impacted coastal habitats, among other defects. The United States Environmental Protection Agency determined that the NPDES permit, that is a stormwater discharge permit application form, was administratively incomplete. In addition to raising Clean Water Act problems, EPA also found that the application lacks a mitigation plan for aquatic resources and wetlands. And the U.S. Coast Guard has documented over 200 categories of their Texas Gulf Terminal applications deficiencies, showing in a data gap chart that the Texas Gulf Terminal's application did not contain information required to determine the environmental impact of the project, amongst other defects. When the application failed to provide the information required by the Coast Guard and the Maritime Administration to fill those gaps, they did, in fact, suspend the application online. Two, we have issues with the use of Oasis County property. Drafted the comments prepared by the Texas Parks and- Drafted the comments prepared by the Texas Parks and Wildlife, or TPW, indicates that TPW believes that the proposed route of the inshore pipeline crosses land acquired by Nuasis County from the General Land Office for use as a public recreation area. Therefore, the requested easement project needs to be reviewed in light of the stringent requirements of the Texas Park and Wildlife Code, Chapter 26. That specifically says that the county may not approve a project that requires the use or taking of public land designated and used as a park, recreation area, scientific area, wildlife refuge, or historic site without finding that, one, there were no feasible alternatives, and, two, that the project includes all reasonable planning to avoid harm to the designated area. The finding can only be made after public notice and hearing. Three, we do have issues with the Texas Gulf Terminal's proposed operations. There have been serious issues identified with respect to the proposed operations of the Texas Gulf Terminal's Deepwater Port. Ian Vasey did, in fact, mention some of those with respect to air quality. I just want to highlight that the Texas Gulf Terminal's Deepwater Port project is projected to emit 10,855 tons per year of VOCs, volatile organic compounds, and Commissioners and Judge, just for your adification, that is more than double the sum of the total 2017 point source emissions of Nuasis, San Patricio, Aransas, and Clayburg Counties combined, more than double those four counties' 2017 source emissions combined. And fourth, we have issues with the company itself, Trafagura. The county needs to look carefully at who is behind the Texas Gulf Terminal's Deepwater Port. Trafagura, which owns Texas Gulf Terminals in whole, has a lengthy history of corporate malfeasance, including criminal liability for violating environmental laws on two continents and alleged bribery. For example, its CEO spent five months in jail in the Ivory Coast for dumping hazardous waste in one of its earlier environmental schemes. Trafagura was fined over $1 million by the Dutch government for illegally exporting hazardous waste. Trafagura was involved in a price fixing scheme in Malta. Three times in the last six years, Trafagura was cited by the U.S. EPA for violating the Federal Clean Air Act, resulting in three administrative settlement agreements and payments of penalties to the federal government. Trafagura pled guilty in a Texas federal court for making false statements to the federal government in connection with illegal dealings related to Saddam Hussein and the Iraq Oil for Food Program. And lastly, the Brazilian authorities and the U.S. Department of Justice currently is investigating Trafagura for alleging payment of millions of dollars in bribes to employees of the Brazilian oil company Petrobras in exchange for lucrative trading contracts and bribes that were allegedly paid to a Petrobras employee in Houston, Texas. These allegations are part of a pattern of Trafagura flouting the laws of the countries in which it operates. Therefore, the county should not award an easement to Trafagura until these allegations and the other questions that we have about this particular application are, in fact, answered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Strawbridge. On a different subject matter, per the item line, I'm going to call Pastor Adam Carrington.
Greetings, Judge.
Greetings.
Commissioners, good to see all of you. I'm not here today to start any trouble. Not yet, anyway. Thank you very much for your, for this opportunity to voice my concern. I'm here today to express my concern regarding the blatant display of, of a symbol that represents hatred, evil, mass murder, racism, discrimination, and slavery. I'm referring to the sons of the Confederate veterans symbol posted on the float, which I saw in the recent public buccaneers parade. I understand history, especially the history of the Civil War fought between 1861 and 1865, which I learned in school, not in a public parade. A war fought by the Confederate states, which included Texas, against the Union states over the institution of slavery. The Confederate states were fighting to keep slavery where black people would remain slaves. I'm happy they didn't win, or I and many other people who look like me may be slaves as of today. I understand that people of my ethnicity will be hated forever simply because of my skin color. But I thought that the Emancipation Proclamation signed in January 1, 1863 freed slaves. I'm not asking this court or anyone else to remove history of the Civil War or any history associated with the Civil War, but I am asking that this court, which represents Nuasis County, not allow statues, symbols, flags, or any other symbolism that represents hatred, evil, mass murder, racism, discrimination, or slavery be displayed in public parades, on public buildings, schools, churches, hospitals, or any place that remind African-Americans, blacks, negroes, colors, or whatever we are called today, that we're hated and should be slaves. I have a right to attend a public parade without being reminded that I'm hated and should be a slave, simply because of my ethnicity and my color. There's nothing wrong with teaching and learning history, but public parades is not the place to do it, especially when it represents hatred, evil, mass murder, racism, discrimination, and slavery. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Pastor. At this time, I'd call John Medina to the dais. Hi, John.
Good morning. My name is John Medina. I live, I reside at 4931 Mulberry Drive. And I, I'm with Corpus Christi News now, and I was, wanted to bring the attention to the fact that the hallways are being blocked, and our cameras aren't, or easily can be toppled over, and I just was trying to bring that to the attention of everyone here. I've gone to the city council meeting several times, and I've made several comments there. And I have had someone here from the Commissioners come and speak against me for something that I have said. And I pointed out several things. One of them was about the, the names that were, and how the, they were seated. And I put it on the, the mayor's eyes to, everybody to see. And someone spoke about that, that there was no racism or anything about that, and I, it's either, one, you're, have a special interest, or you're with what I saw and what I was, not accusing him, I was making him aware of what was going on. And I believe that in 2020, if you're going to be running for office and you're going to be, you know, going that direction, it's not going to stand very well in, in the people's So, I want to tell everybody that not only the, the proclamations that, that are, are held here at the beginning, when y'all did the proclamations, everybody left. If you can see, the chairs are empty. And I would like to have that turned around to where that can be held afterwards, so they can sit here and listen to what's going on. Another thing is, they start, what's going on is the, the alphabet. Same thing happened over at, at, at the courthouse, I mean, at the city hall. They approve stuff and they go by numbers and letters, and, and a lot of people that are sitting there don't have this in hand. So, you say, letter A, letter B, letter C, and a lot of people don't understand what's going on, and it just goes right by their heads, you know? And to me, it's just showing that it's, it's, you're, you're trying to get it passed and not making the, letting the people be aware and challenging what could possibly be challenged. So, again, my name's John Medina, and I'll be here, and I would like for, to do something to, where we could get our cameras here, and, and, I mean, it's a safety issue, safety concerned, and I know that y'all will take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. Commissioner Modas, you've signed up for a public comment. I know you have a special presentation.
Yeah, I want to ask Deandra Bueno, she'll come up. I think I got her name, her last name right, last time I got it wrong, so.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning. Most of you know Deandra. She is my intern in the fall semester and also this semester, and so she is a graduate student at Texas A&amp;M University Kingsville in the social work program, and she has been assisting my office, been just extra staff, helping with studies that we've conducted, town halls that we've conducted, and assisting Sandra with all of that, and also, most recently, helped organize a big chunk of our kids at the courthouse, classrooms at the courthouse, where we did mock Commissioner Court meetings, where a lot of you got to, to come in and visit with them for a little bit. So, Deandra was a big part of that. And so, she's finished, her semester is finishing up, and so typically, the graduate students are assigned a year assignment, and a lot of times, most of the time, they'll show general interest or subject matter, they want to go into kind of a specialty, if you will, for their graduate studies. And so, I was fortunate enough that, that Deandra's, for this, for, this school year, was public policy. And so, I thought, what better place than, obviously, the courthouse to deal with public policy that we deal with a lot? We deal with our social services department and through grants and others that Deandra had also a chance to shadow and work with. So, today, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank her for her work. I'm going to present her certificate of appreciation, signed by the judge and the entire court, and just for your participation in the internship program with Nuasis County under my direction, but really, she was a county asset for these last two semesters, and so I just appreciate her work, all she's done, and, and so just wanted to take this time to say thank you, Deandra.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I also have Carolyn Vaughn on public, Public Comment, Commissioner.
I want to comment on something that was said a few minutes ago. I was the commissioner that was at the court and made a public comment. I made it as a citizen. And the reason I did that, it's very difficult when you're sitting up here on city council. I serve there, so I know when public comes up and says something that's not so. Sometimes the public perceives things that are not there. So, the comment, basically, what he was saying was, because you had three, a couple of white men sitting by the mayor, three white men in a row, basically, shame on you, that's racist. That's not what they did, and so the public needs to know. He rotates his mayor pro tem, so they will rotate all the time. Before, he had Ms. Juahardo on one side, so it's going to continue to rotate. We don't need divisiveness in the city, and we're so blessed that we've got a majority of Hispanics on the council right now. So, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No, you're getting it just back and forth.
Well, I, I think we're, we have a time limit on that, but you're welcome to come at another Commissioners' Court meeting and sign up for public comment again. Okay, at this time, we're going to proceed to the consent agenda, Commissioners, and there are a few things that I do need to remove. I think one is F1, and that has to do with the outside agencies. I just don't think that contract is prepared and ready.
Well, the contract is ready. I just want to clarify, it's $1,000, not 1,000, not 1,100.
Okay, well, let me do this. Let me, so we're going to pull F1 for that clarification. We're also going to pull letter number H, so I can provide you some clarification. And then, as you know, Commissioners, we've already dealt with letters M and N. So, I'm looking for a motion.
Can I move K? Remove K.
Yes, ma'am. Let me do that. Okay.
Hold on, you want to pull?
Pull K.
F1, H, K.
F1, F1, H, K, and we've already dealt with M and N. And I'm looking for a motion to...
So moved.
Thank you for the rest of those letters. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion with any of those? Okay. Hearing, none. All those in favor of approving those items not pulled, please signify by saying aye. 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 Post same sign. Okay, let's go to, you kind of already heard it from Tyner, but F1, the clarification, Commissioners, it's incorrect on your agenda. It's 1,000, not 1,100.
That's correct, and the attachment is correct.
And the attachment is correct. So, can I get a motion to approve F1?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Okay, and I was looking to see if Chairman Valls was here of the Appraisal District. Is he outside by any chance? No? That's okay. He, he's also in a meeting. I'll do my best. But this morning, the Appraisal District Board is also meeting simultaneously. I was able to attend that meeting early this morning, where we addressed letter number H, Commissioners. For clarification, recall that we have already approved the hiring of former Supreme Court Associate Justice Craig Enick of now private practice Enick Keever, P L C C, to assist us with our boundary dispute case. And this morning, I was able to go present in executive session to the Appraisal District Board. It's my understanding they have approved it since I left, that they will share in this engagement to the tune of 50%. And so, I just wanted you to be aware of that, that, and you might remember that we originally were trying to retain Justice Enick for the purposes of assisting us as an expert with legislation regarding our submerged lands, but that never came to pass. And so, now, we're going to turn our sights to the litigation aspect of the pending lawsuit that we have, Nuasis County versus San Patricio County, in, to be heard in Refugio County. And we wish to engage Craig Enick. Lauda, you have the contract, and you'll be engaging. And now, I would, I think perhaps, do you need to have from the court a reimbursement policy included, Lauda?
No, not in this one.
Okay. You'll just invoice appropriately, Dale? You'll just invoice appropriately.
Judge, I'm sorry. And how long is this for?
It's a month to month, correct, Lauda?
Yes, and it was up to the end of four months, and then, at the end of four months, we can decide whether we still need, need him or not.
We are set for trial in October, Commissioners, at least pre-trial. It's going to be a little impossible at this moment to see how long the engagement is, but at another four months, we will come back to you and, and give you another update and let you know how important this is.
And the reason I ask is because of the retainer amount, and so what you're saying is, is the Appraisal District has agreed to pay half this retainer amount?
Correct.
And then, I, I just don't remember where, where we got, in the letter, it says 10,000 a month.
Correct.
And then, I just don't remember where the funding was coming from, and that was my only other question.
We actually have a contingency legal fund. Dale, do you want to address that? I believe there's...
No, that's, that's fine. I've got it covered. I'm good.
We do.
I just couldn't remember.
It's in our budget.
Thank you very much. That's fine.
Paying 5,000, they're paying 5,000.
That's correct.
Commissioners, may I make a correction?
Of course.
Okay.
To this item, Tyner?
The F1, no, not to this item.
Okay, you're going to go back in time.
Hold on, let me move passage on this one.
I was going to say, if you don't mind, hold.
Forward.
I've got a motion, and I think I heard a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Post same sign.
I'm sorry.
We'll also bring Justice Enick at a future date, so that you can meet them, him, Commissioners, and his staff, and he can brief us. I'm sorry, Tyner.
Okay, Judge, I picked for F1.
Yes, sir.
That one is actually 1,100. I'm sorry to confuse this. What I intended to suggest is G2, Refuge of Hope, should be 1,000, not 1,100. I saw the 1,100, and I jumped on it. I apologize.
That's all right. Will the clerk make that note?
So, then, we would, we would withdraw the motion on F1, and it would, and so it would continue to be 1,100, and so we would need to pass F1 as 1,100.
That's correct.
So, I would make the motion that that passes 1,100.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. And now, we'll go to Refuge of Hope and make the correction on G2, looking for a motion.
That should be 1,000.
That's correct.
And I would move that, that, second his motion. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor of the correction to Refuge of Hope as a $1,000 outside agency contribution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Okay. We're going to move right along to the regular agenda. I noticed we have...
Judge, I think we still had K.
K, yeah. Oh, we certainly do. Sorry about that, Carolyn.
Okay.
That was yours item.
I just have a question. This is, are you coming? Okay, is this who we've always used to do this? Okay, is this who we've always used to do this?
Yes, ma'am.
The reason I ask is there's been a lot of, it's on the streamlining, correct? Complaints on it. I mean, the audio, the talking, lips are moving before the picture or after the picture. So do
Yeah, I've got Lance here, you want to speak to that?
Sorry, Lance. He's got some problems.
Yeah, no, we're in contact with them. In fact, we've been, we've been in a state of confusion ever since we replaced the audio system. So we, it's kind of when you mix new equipment with old, and we're just having a lot of problems back and forth. And it's kind of getting to the stage where I think that we're going to see a request to finish the upgrade, because it's causing complications to have old and new in this world. So, and we are with them every time, getting on support, trying to address that kind of stuff. Most of the time, the feed that's going to the internet, which goes to the recording itself, is actually okay. It's usually the feed that's going to the TV channel that's affected by that. So the good news is that we are still getting valid recordings on these. And I think, except for one situation where they were able to correct it pretty quickly.
My husband watches it, and he just thinks it's terrible. And I've had some others tell me the same thing, that it's just awful. And compared to the city, and I know it's apples and oranges, but it just, theirs works really well. So we're paying a lot of money, that's my only point.
The money that's in here is for everything except, basically, the connection that goes to the city. That is our own crossover output. And we're not even allowed to have that be HD because of regulations that are outside our control.
Yeah.
The cable industry that is here is required to put a public access channel out there, but they're not required to make it HD. So even the city's signal is not HD. But we use their signal, so it's the same thing going through.
They're streaming so much better. I'm not trying to be ugly, but it really is. So what you're telling me is that you're going to be coming back with more money to update some other stuff.
And we should have the CO money to do that, so it won't be requesting, I'm not asking for any more money. Just want to make that clear. But yeah, we'll need to include those video upgrades as part of the solution. Our goal was just to try to get it working, but we've spent a lot of time trying and
Maybe a better way also to clarify for everybody is that through no fault of this production company, we're not getting the best quality of signal. Is that correct? Is that, in other words, I think the concern was, is is there anything more that this company could be doing?
There are a few things that we are working with them on. There have been some errors with some of the videos posting and such, and we've been holding them to the fire on that. But that particular issue is mostly with the connection out that we send to the city, which does happen to not be in the support of this, because it's just an output device.
Okay, thank you. And Michael, this was, forgive me, and this was a sole, a sole source?
Yes, ma'am.
So we don't have, I mean, this is somebody that
Yeah, we have pre-existing software, and we're also utilizing the Destiny Cloud Provider. And so because of that inherent nature of the established software, it's proprietary. So we can only go to this source
Got it.
to maintain that connection. And just for y'all's edification, the amount paid did not go up. It's the same as we paid in the previous year.
So you're saying this is the source we'll always have to use? You say it's proprietary?
I'm saying, in the way that we're currently structured,
Structured.
that's the way we would have to go. If we get some additional technology in the future
We could change.
then we have that opportunity.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify too. They store all of our commissioner court videos in unlimited storage. And these videos can get quite long. So any switching would also require us to move terabytes and terabytes of video data from one provider to the other. So that's why we choose to keep it there. And unless they are not able to accommodate our needs, it would be a fairly big bill, not just to switch, but the actual transition and migration process.
What you're saying, we have to talk less?
If you talked less, we'd have less video, yes.
Thank you.
And just so you know, this
So moved. So moved, second, third.
And this contract does go through February 2020, just to make everybody aware.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I do have a motion, I think. And I need a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Okay. Now, we've gone through our consent agenda. And now, we'll move on to number one. Welcome, Mike.
Good morning. Mike Culbertson with your Corpus Christi Regional EDC.
Like that.
And November 17, the court approved a temporary tax abatement for Epic Wide Grade. Epic is Eagle Ford, Permian, Ingleside, Corpus Christi. And they are doing a fractionator at, down there on, just below, just across from Lyondale. One of the requirements of the section was to close by January 1st of 2019, which they did on their primary property. They went ahead and bought the property next to them, and it was a different owner. And because of that, they didn't close until February 12, 2019. We're asking for an amendment to change that from January 1st, 2019, to February 2012. And I'm here to answer any questions. They could probably build on their current one, and that is part of the reinvestment zone that the court approved.
Not 12.
2012?
February 12, 2019.
Oh, okay, thank you. February 12. They could probably build on their, on the property that they closed on. But they want the option to, if they need to, to move into that other property. And since they did not close on it, under, you know, under the deadline, they would like to extend that.
And remind the court, it's a large investment, so you might want to remind everybody about their investment.
Yes, right now, it is 200 million. And that is just the first part of this. And they will start, they've actually started construction on their moving dirt for them right now. And we expect them to grow, but let's just talk about their investment right now.
How many jobs? How long is the abatement?
The abatement is for, it's eight years with three years of construction. But if they finish, which we believe they will, then the court will, through me, declare that the construction is complete. And then, if they have like another year of construction, they will just lose that, and then they get into five years at 50%.
And this is the one that has, is it 10 permanent jobs?
Yes, sir.
Just 10?
It's a lot of, lot of money coming in with 10 jobs.
I know, I know. And that's why I had issues with it the last time. I mean, I voted against it. It's in my precinct. I had issues with it. That's why I wanted to know, really, the long-term abatement. Because eventually, that does come back to us. Commissioners, for the record, Ian Vasie with the EDC, we're working on multiple phases. The job count, we can anticipate going up and things, and don't be surprised of. And Mike hates it when I do this, but at the end of the day, this is going to be in the billions.
I also want to echo that
Is that recorded?
I also want to echo that, of course, Epic's pipeline is, you might want to just address their contributions to bringing Permian.
It is very important. We hear about how everything's backing up in the Permian, trying to bring stuff down. This is one of the ones, and it's getting completed. And, you know, we talk, we hear a lot about pipelines. But when they start moving through the ground and start building the end part of it, this is where the Port Corpus Christi and all of Corpus Christi benefits by getting that stuff and getting it through Port Corpus Christi.
Right. I think what's going to really help us, something I'm going to look towards the future in doing is asking the Port of Corpus Christi to come and share with us the outlook for 10 years, you know, with crude oil expectations and delivery. It's always hard for everybody to say, gosh, I mean, that five years seems like such an eternity. But what we want to know, and what citizens want to know, is that it's going to last way beyond the five years. And to really do that, you need to have an understanding of the commodities market. And the port has access to things that we don't have. Maybe we can work together, Ian and Mike, and ask EAI to come and give their abbreviated version of outlook going through 2025. I think that's going to make a major impact when we start looking and forecasting past these abatements. I know I want to be past these abatements. I know my commissioners do. And that's what we're looking for, so.
And this has an impact on our oil industry here. I'm in that, and it does, because it's holding it up from the Permian. So this is really very important for our economy.
And as the port talks about, you know, it's changing that trade balance to get through. I mean, when we talk about, you know, when you take a look at the EAI stats, the refineries do like 800,000 barrels. And we're bringing 800,000 barrels through and moving it out.
Yeah.
That's how much is moving through here.
Really incredible.
Well, we had an issue that came up with one of our partners out in Robstown dealing with Epic indirectly, or directly, actually, with their line. And we had a good conversation and appeased them. It was with the Water District out there in Robstown. And so there were some questions about the piping. And they met it, and they dealt with it, and they addressed those concerns. And so we moved forward. So I very much appreciate them being a part of that. We're seeing a lot of activity right now, that 44 corridor, the Lyondale. We've seen a number of things. I could see, over the next couple of years, multiples of billions of dollars being invested, especially the bid stream, the fractionation things, and the jobs starting to come with that. Again, these things are always multiple phases. So we're just, you know, this is putting the, without going into the agreements and Mike, again, Mike hates it when I do these things, but we're working with these guys on future pieces. You're going to see more pieces.
Well, and since we have you here, and I get to say what I want, since I have the mic, I want you to know that on the horizon, and it's a good thing, is that we intend, as a county, to prioritize Nueces, just like Midland has done with their Priority Midland. I'm already working with folks to bring, you know, the mayor of Midland here to Corpus Christi and to the courthouse to visit with me, because they've found a great way to partner with these companies. You know, we've done our job. That's what I think abatements are. It's us having skin in the game with them. But there are ways that they can also make major contributions to the community in which they're working during those first five years, when they've got the better end of the bargain. And I think Midland has given us a template for that under their Priority Midland project. And I intend to copy it. And so that's a little teaser for the future, but I think it's exciting. And the folks from Midland are anxious to share. But I'm also happy to tell this commissioner's court that the folks from Epic did come to see me at, maybe a couple of weeks back, to introduce their company to me. And that's a first step in giving back, is figuring out who they are and what they want, what kind of an investor they want to be. So, okay, with that, commissioners, so basically, the request is an additional, I mean, to extend the abatement. Thank you. To include that new date, right?
Yes, ma'am. Second.
And I've got a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. We're now going to talk
Table item two?
Sure. Is it your, was it your agenda item, Commissioner? Commissioner, we're going to table that. I've got a second from Chesney. All those in favor of tabling item number two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Item number three. Martin, if you mind, just come up for a resource. So sorry to do this, but on my desk, I have two pieces of paper. One says Coastal Bend Veterans State Cemetery. It's like a chart, and then there's like a bullet points. I left them right on my desk, right on top. I'd like to refer to them. Let me set the table here, and then, Martin, just be here for questions and as a resource to the court. Commissioners, I put this on the agenda item today. It says, discuss and consider the administering, excuse me, discuss and consider approval of administering a contract for the Coastal Bend State Veterans Cemetery. You might be aware that we are one of four locations in the state of Texas. It's so honored to have a veterans' state cemetery. But recently, the General Land Office has decided that they would like to go in a different direction. And the direction that they would like to go towards is that to allow cities and/or counties to administer the employees, the maintenance and operation of the facility itself. They had been working with an outside contractor for many years. And that one contractor had all four cemeteries. They could not come to an agreement with that contractor. And therefore, the folks that were working local were dismissed. That created a lot of angst, not only for me personally, because I like to listen to my veterans. And when they tell me that that's a problem, thank you so much, then I believe them. And they were very upset. And so we, Martin and I, talked. And I got some information from Martin about the good operations that were being done locally and the person that was in charge. And we called the General Land Office to express not only our concern, but our willingness to step in. And that has resulted in them giving to me, as of yesterday, Lauda, which I will flip to you as soon as this court is over, a draft of an agreement that is simply that, it's just a draft. And we will also, they will also give the same agreement to the city of Corpus Christi. And we can, if we so choose together, commissioners, vie for the opportunity to be the custodian of the maintenance and operations of our veterans' cemetery. How I see this working is through Martin's office, in the sense of, I mean, well, let me back up. The 14 people will be on premises at the veterans' cemetery. There will be one veterans' land board representative. But what I mean is that we already have the structure and the framework through veteran services. When people want to ask about burials, there isn't, or when a spouse dies, they wind up calling Martin's office very often. He winds up being the information center for everybody. These folks would become county employees. Okay, now I've said all the things that should make you worry. Now, let me say the good. The state of Texas would fund us to do this. In other words, all they want to do is take it out of their Austin, Texas office and put it in our potential Nueces County hands. That's giving us the local control that I personally am coming to advocate for. There is a lot to do between A and Z. I mean, Lauda hasn't even seen this agreement yet. However, the city of Abilene has gone first, and this is the contract they've used for the city of Abilene. As I said, it is my intention to vie for it, but it's not, it should be, as a community, we should decide who the best entity is. And in that vein, I intend, I have a meeting with the mayor later this afternoon. And he might get wind of it, because we're an open and transparent court. But I'm going to visit with him about this very issue. The two things I want to bring to your attention is the historical data. In 2011, we opened and we had 27 burials. Last year, we had 483. Veterans come here to Nueces County for a variety of veterans' services and healthcare benefits, including our VA clinics, but all the way to the burial benefits. And really, I think these were your talking points, Martin. Is there anything that you might want to add to this conversation? My action item today, commissioners, is you allow myself, as the county judge, along with the county attorney's office, to see if we can not only work with the General Land Office and the veterans' land board, but also work with the city to come up with a mutually acceptable entity that would now be in charge of the veterans' cemetery.
Judge, I support this 100%. And it should always been, it should have been ours from the beginning. But when you say city, county, and they're going to be county employees, it's like the county and the health departments, you know, in Nueces County and city, so
No, sir, I'm sorry. All I want to do is make sure that I'm being, I want to go convince the mayor that the county is the best person. I just mean that I think in any good community, you should go and talk these things out with the city. Because the GLO actually envisioned the cities taking this over.
They wouldn't be a partner.
No, it would be one or the other. But I just think that we, as a county, are better suited. In fact, Martin is the mayor's chairman for veterans' affairs.
I agree with that. I think that's better. I think when it's a dual thing, it just don't work too good.
No, it would not be dual. I just mean that we have not had a chance to speak with the mayor. My meeting is after this meeting with him, on a variety of issues.
Do you want us to say, we're going to motion that allow you to proceed in doing, talking with the city and talking with Lauda and see what happens, and then come back?
I think it's really more permission to engage with the General Land Office to see if the county would be the best suitable entity to take over operations.
Judge?
I just want you to know that I'm not going to do it with I just want you to know that I'm not going to do it without the city's blessing.
Well, can I?
Of course, this is discussion.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I like that they're getting it out of the hands of these private folks. I, I'm curious as to why they think cities are better than counties. And I don't mean that negatively. Because obviously, in most cases, the cities are bigger, have more resources, have more funds. Maybe that's part of this. I don't really know. And I think it needs to be handled locally. I'm not opposed to a, a joint venture with the city, with all due respect. I think our city-county health department works very well together. And, and the reason that, you know, I think our MetroCom works very well together. So I'm not opposed to, to, to looking at something with the city. Because my concern is, the state says they'll fund us now. But what happens five years from now when something upstream at the legislature says, well, why are we still funding this county-run cemetery? Why are we still? I, I have no trust with respect to what will happen from state and the, and the unfunded mandates that we finally get. So I a hundred percent agree with Commissioner Gonzalez on the, the concept of, we need to be doing something locally. We need to make sure this succeeds. This is an important asset to our community. I'm very, very concerned about us taking it on. We are the smaller player in the deal. We are a hundred million dollar budget. The city is a nine hundred million dollar budget. It is one hundred percent in the city limits. So I, I don't know that I think we should just jump right out there without really having some things in place that say, and I don't know what you can guarantee the legislature, but I, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't trust them. I don't think.
So let me, so let me explain a little bit of what I know. Number one, all your points are well taken. And a good lawyer, that's Lourdes, is going to make sure that that contract, you know, states that if there's no longer funding, then we no longer would be able to support that maintenance and operation. I mean, that's number one from a legal standpoint. Number two.
Twenty-year contract or something?
Well, it's, it's whatever we negotiate. But, but I will say this, that the state of Texas gets a lot of their funding, not just from the legislature, but from the national cemetery, the national veterans cemetery appropriations. And so in other words, there's a, there's a hierarchy of, of funding, much like US dot funds text dot. Yes, sir. Please, please comment.
The funding from the cemetery comes from a Proposition Seven that was passed way back then. Because one percent is taken to fund the perpetual care of cemeteries in the state of Texas. The state of Texas had planned to build seven cemeteries. And they wound up building four in the state of Texas. So that money is generated from the loan interest, from housing loans, from land loans and student loans. So that's where that money comes from to fund, to fund cemeteries, sir.
So it's guaranteed.
Well, and, and that's fine and good to hear. So, and Laura can do some stuff, but I, I still don't, I, I'm not a, I don't know why we're so opposed or why we would be opposed to doing it as a joint city-county. I mean, this is a, a, this is an area of pride for the city. This is a phenomenal facility. I would think the city and the city council people would be proud to be associated with this project, just as we would be. And I think the more resources you have, the better that the opportunities are to, to do things. But I, I mean, so it doesn't bother me to.
Well, I think that's what we want to engage in, right? I mean, today it was to bring it to your attention that this is an opportunity for us. I don't think Eric Brown, who is the director, it wants to see any, I mean, all he wants to make certain of is that it's in the best hands. That's sort of the, that was the message that Martin and I both got, is that he wanted to see it in the best hands. The city does not have a veterans affairs department. And we do. And we really understand veteran services, I think, best. I think all our veterans, quite frankly, I mean, Martin's kind of like one of those rock stars. You just say their first name, you know, to a veteran, you just say, Martin, talk to Martin. And I mean, everybody knows to go to veteran services. I am totally ready to.
And maybe we need to be the lead on it, but I'm just saying, I think that not have the city's resources in this and not at least have the opportunity for, to them to participate would, I mean, I, I think we had, we ought to participate. I just think we ought to include the city if we can. He, you said he was the chairman of the, but our veterans.
Chairman of the mayor's committee.
Yeah. And our veterans department is two people, Judge. I mean, let's be clear. I mean, we got, what, two people? Our whole veterans department is two people. That's not a lot. And so we've only got two more people doing it over here. And it's because the county is mandated by constitution or statute or whatever to have the veterans affairs officer. And so we do that and we do a great job. And Martin, you know, that's still, I still, still am proud. That's one of the best hires we've ever made is Martin Longoria. And, and I'm proud to be a part of that. But I do think that, you know, because plus, we, you know, when it comes down to, if we want, if we want to fight for something for the, to have all the city behind us and the county and all the city councilmen going up there and to help fight. I just think, to me, I just think the better way to go is to.
Yeah, well, like I said, today, we're going to engage in that conversation. I mean, that's, that's the idea. I just think the GLO is not going to want to see a city-county employee type structure. I don't, I don't think that that's going to be clean. There's fourteen employees. That our understanding is they would want to have fourteen more employees. But look, everything is, is flexible, pliable. I mean, we can certainly, let me speak with the mayor. Also, I'm very mindful, we have a new city manager coming in on May twentieth. I plan to visit with him. All I really want, and it would really help advance the ball, is if we could send Lourdes this contract. And this contract's going to look the same for a city as it does for a county, right? So the idea is, is I think it's our responsibility to advance the ball. Let me just say this. Whether you've read it in the paper, whether you've seen it on television, whether you've attended the veterans roundtables, our veterans, that number over thirty thousand, are very angry that this cemetery's administration has changed. And they're very wanting to get back on track in a way that they feel comfortable. Is that accurate, Martin?
Yes, that's accurate. I mean, if it's been working, why make a change? I mean, if it's been working for the last seven years since this cemetery's been operational and it's been rated top in the United States and in the state of Texas, so why make the change? Also, from previous commissioners' courts, from Judge Samicek to Richard Borchardt to Judge Neal, the county commissioners have always supported the Coastal Bend Veterans State Cemetery. And just on research and reading, I know that Nueces County, at the onset of opening this cemetery, basically voted on providing eighty thousand dollars to get, to get the cemetery. Flint Hills donated fifty-three acres in order to do this. The city provides the water to the cemetery. So you can say it's a joint effort in some part. So, you know, it's, it's a one, a hand-in-hand kind of thing. And, you know, I've been entrusted by you all to look after the veterans. And I've been entrusted by the veterans organizations as the chairman to their best interests. So I'm dual-hat and dual-rolled. But it's always about the veteran and the families in my, my part.
Yeah. And, and again, I'm a hundred percent for us being involved in this in some capacity. I'm just saying, I think we ought to include the city because I think the more resources, the more political steam we have, the more people we have behind this, the better we're going to serve these veterans. And I think the city council, we want those nine members of the council going, hey, we're fired up about this, just like we are. That's just all I'm saying, is I think we ought to look at it as a joint, but I think we ought to be involved.
That's why I'm letting.
Make a motion for her to continue looking at this. Do we need to make a motion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So right now, who's running it?
Right now, it's in a third party that's taking care of the cemetery and the services until these contracts are signed. I know the city of Abilene just signed their contract. And I believe the city of Mission, Texas, where the other cemetery is at down in the Rio Grande Valley, is also working on that, ma'am.
Okay, and I, I'm looking at it. It says it costs about a million to operate the cemetery a year. But we would not, the county would not be putting any money in that. We would be getting the money back, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the only thing that I know lawyers have these words they use. And so I'm seeing down here, it's talking about the money, the public funds and what we get back. And it says, we must be reasonably compensated. Well, sometime reasonably is a different definition for some than others, especially the ones it's getting and the ones giving out the money. But I, I think it just, it just makes sense to me that the county would run it. It just makes sense. And, but I'll support whatever the judge break, any kind of deal you're going to do with the city, I'll support it. Doesn't matter to me either way, as long as we don't have to pay anything.
Just, just that you'll notice to add on to that, aside from the implementation of that cemetery, you're also going to use, because you become county employees, you'll use the purchasing department, you'll use the legal department, everything, pretty much.
So that's gonna, that's gonna be an impact.
And, and again, to share that impact, be a way to share those resources with the city. That's all I'm trying to say is, before we just jump out and say, we want to do it by ourselves, because we want to help you, we, I mean, this, this thing is, I would be ticked off as all get out if I were the veterans, the way it is right now, too. And you can go back and say, I think you've heard, you know, we definitely want to be involved in this. All I am saying is, let's share some resources if we've got them, because it's going to be a, a big impact. And I don't, I'm sorry, I don't trust the state. If there's a way to screw us out of Prop seven money, they're going to figure out a way to do it.
And that's why, when I met with a judge, you know, you don't want to move too fast. You kind of want to tread water and tread water lightly, sir, as you're stating. And I don't blame you. You have the right. I'm just, my concern is that, and that, that was, that was brought to my attention is that, because it's a third-party vendor that's handling the cemetery, all the dignity and respect that's given to the veterans, that's my concern. Because the first person they're going to call is me. And the second person, depending on what part of the, of the county they live in, they're going to call you. And they're going to raise their voice and say, hey, what's going on with this?
Well, it sounds like you're going to get to be running a cemetery. And you're going to probably be over all these employees. I mean, it sounds like that's where we're headed in some capacity.
No, not really, sir, because as far as on the cemetery side.
Right, he'll be the lay, he'll, he'll.
No, I mean, you'll be involved with them so that you'll have, that's what I'm saying. That's a good thing. I mean, I think that if you're, the more involved you're with this, because when they're calling you and then if it is a city-county or a county or whatever, then you're, then you're, you're going to have more pull when you pick up the phone and, hey, call and say, hey, I got a complaint. I think, I think it's good that you're going to be involved, because they do call you and you are the guy. And, and then you'll be able to say, hey, you know, I, I do have a little more input now because we're involved with it. So I, I think we're all headed in the right, in a positive direction, which is.
I'd like to see, you know, that today, it's just the start. It's just getting into the discussion. It's just to move forward. I agree with many of the concerns that have been brought up. I mean, do we go into a partnership? Is it better run if we run it on our own? What is the additional cost of adding on employees? Will that totally be covered by the state? I think just to be able to move forward and let the veteran community know, and just the community in general. Obviously, we love our veterans and thank them for their service. And that we're going to figure this problem out. And under the direction of the judge and with you also, Martin, that you're going to bring in the city and the county together. Even if the city's not formally a part of it, you're being part of the mayor's committee, you're going to be there to help be that, that connection, that liaison with them. So I don't have a problem with us moving forward, looking at this and letting the veterans community know that, that we're going to try to find some sort of solution. It's personal for me. My father-in-law is already designated. That's where he chooses to be buried. So I, and, and other family and friends that we have that have already made those plans. So we want it to succeed. It's unfortunate the state hasn't done what they need to do. But as long as they keep that funding, I say, let's move forward and, and let's make it happen. So, thank you.
I make a motion. The judge moves forward and brings back some recommendations.
Anything else, ma'am?
I think that's good. Thank you, Martin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Motion in a second. And I will forward the contract that they sent me, just so we can start the ball rolling. I'll be back on another agenda item next time to give you updates. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Okay. All right. Yes. Commissioner Gonzalez, thank you for the second. I believe the next item was put on by Commissioner Chesney, and it also has been recommended by him to, to table.
Already tabled it.
Oh, we did. That's right, earlier for, okay. So Maria, if it's your turn again. We have a particular grant relating to Cindy Park.
Yes, good morning. Okay.
Good morning.
So five years and three grants later, we are finally able to provide clean surface water to the residents of Cindy Park and some of the residents in the ranch colonial. This, this agreement before you this morning is to turn over all the utilities that were built through those grants over to Nueces Water Supply Corporation, who is now going to be providing the water service to those residents.
Great.
The, in fact, we have the, also the ribbon cutting.
Yes, so there is going to be a ribbon cutting on May thirtieth at two P M. You will be getting an official invitation in your mailboxes by the end of this week, I believe. We're going to finalize all those details today. So we're excited. There is one more phase of the project. We'll discuss later on purchasing. But pretty much, we're, you know, the water's being provided, so we're excited.
Hopefully, we'll close out the board by the end of the month, dissolve the board. And, and the, the, the water well has already been taken down. It's already been dissolved. So the residents are really having, enjoying the good water, making their good coffee. And Commissioner Van, thank you for everything, because this is your, your area. And thank you for allowing us to continue working on, on this project. So.
Thanks for doing it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you. So are we have a motion to move forward for execution and a second? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Maria. And Juan, going to move on to public works. And before you take the podium, I just, oh, county judge wants to recognize chairman of the appraisal district board, John Valls. John, I know you were at your other meeting. I just want you to know, in your absence, we went ahead and, you know, reported what you all approved this morning. So I just didn't want you to think we had forgotten about you. But we've already consummated the agenda item. Okay, thank you. Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for making the effort to be here. Go ahead, Juan. Tell us about the legal dumping.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I have Ned Sherry here. He's our, one of our code enforcement officers.
Okay, hello. Good morning.
If you have any questions after the presentation, he'll be here to assist. Commissioners and Judge, I just want to bring up an, an update on the legal dumping. I'm going to give you a little bit of the history on it. The county has no abatement ordinance. The Texas Health and Code, we follow the Texas Health and Safety Code. And we also have the litter abatement enforcement. Our average total cost for, per month for illegal dumping that the county spends is about eleven thousand five hundred. So if you multiply that in a, in a twelve-month period, you're looking about a hundred and forty thousand dollars of, of illegal dumping that the county pays to pick up. Violations of Health and Safety Code, we have anywhere from four to five hundred per, per year, per average. Nueces County only has two code enforcement officers, and that's throughout the Nueces County. County has no jurisdiction on septic tanks. So we kind of use the city and, and county health department as the one that oversees that. And then the county enforces the outdoor burning, outdoor burning. The county also has no building codes and can evaluate a structure. So we can, we can't evaluate a structure. We can only ask a, a, a person to contain the building if there's a, a building that's dilapidated. The effects of illegal dumping, what includes, in our end, is we take care of the health and safety and the economic consequences. And environment issues, a non-compliance example is a contractor utilizing navigable waters of the state. So typically, what they do is some contractors go out and they go into navigable waters. And they go out and they steal water. I say steal, right? But they go out and, and pull water from these streams to use for the construction of the projects. So that's one, one of the items that we kind of see. And then we also perform our stormwater inspections sporadically. This is just a copy of the, of the Texas Health and Safety Code of chapter three sixty-five. You can see that we do, that you only have the Class C misdemeanor. And that kind of gives you the weight limit of the, of the Class C. And you also have the Class B and the Class A. So those are just kind of giving you the, the, the weight limits on, on all those items. Illegal dumping in Texas, these are just kind of some photos of the Class Cs and the Class B solid waste. And then also on the, on the Class A. And then some where people use, use the oil and they just kind of disperse of it. And then the water quality, and then of course tires and junk vehicles. And the next slide is what I'm going to present it, is some, just some photos of what our staff has been picking up throughout the Nueces County. One is the, the brush. As you can see, there's our personnel picking up all the brush. On the bottom part is just here recently, about two to three weeks, somebody had just put some pile of, of brush on somebody else's front property. And not, not his own property, but in some, somebody else's property on the right away. The next photo is just showing you the debris. And these are just all household, when they do renovations in their house, they just go and dump it on front of their property without having any type of solid waste service or anything like that. As you can see, one of the main things on the right bottom corner of this illustration is that you do see, you know, which is, we see a lot, is the mattresses. And sometimes on the side of the road, you'll see pretty much one bedroom. You know, so you'll see a living room. You know, all the, all the stuff that's, that's pertains to that one room. On the next one, there, again, there's debris, side of the road. Um, on the next one, there, uh, again, there's debris, side of the road. Top right-hand corner, there's cars that are just left on the right-of-ways. And on the bottom part is just our staff picking up, uh, the debris.
With the cars, though, do you at least do the scrap? I mean, do you?
I think.
Turn them in to that company, you know, that gives you? What is it, junk cars for kids or something, there's a?
We don't, the county does not touch anybody's property out there. The, the property owner has to remove that however, whatever way they want to do it. Sell it to whoever they want to sell it to, but the county does not mess with it.
Okay.
There's no abatement, um, procedures, that's why. And part of the abatement procedures is, uh, you have, there's a cost involved where you have to remove everything. So that was part of the, the problem in the past as to why orders are not in place.
And then, I'm sorry.
So all they can do is site.
But can you change that to have the abatement and then charge them?
But yeah, but you have to do it upfront. I mean, you have to remove the property. The county would be responsible for removing the property. And yeah, you can go after them, but there's no guarantee you're getting any money back.
But we would have a cleaner county.
Yeah, and it, you know, this is disgusting.
There's a cost involved, so that, you know, you, in, in terms of the abatement orders.
But odds are, we can charge them and they could have to pay. Maybe some won't, but they could have to pay.
Under the abatement orders, you would have a, a mechanism to do that.
So we could change the abatement orders?
You, we don't have any.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, we could do some ordinances.
And most likely, they don't know how to get rid of it.
And is that statutory or is that something we can, we have?
Is that a government code?
It's, yeah, it's, it's, um, it gives you the authority to do it under the Health and Safety Code and basic, basically you, you can establish it.
I, I think that that's something we need to set first.
Yes.
The, the, the main problem has always been in, in the cost of removing because the county would be responsible for removing.
Right. No, I agree, I think it's time we look at it real seriously. You know, and the other thing that, um, is just something for, for thought, you know, that we need to look at and I think I mentioned it to Juan or Edward. You know, the code enforcement officers we have, and this all happens in the weekends, you know? Uh, I had Route 35 cleaned and I, uh, and before we worked on it and I went in there about 6:45 in the morning because I, after the weekend. And, uh, I went real slow and there was already, there was already that mattress there and everything else there. You know, we had just cleaned it to get ready to work on it. And I was, but Lugo, another code enforcement officer, uh, you know, I guess he saw me slow down. I hadn't seen him, but he, and I, and I went slow and I went fast and then he put his lights and followed me, you know, and he stopped me and then I rolled down my window and I said, what's going on, Officer Lugo? And he said, I said, I thought you were dumping, I saw, I saw a boxy back, back of your truck, you know? And I said, well, I appreciate you doing your work, I really do, you know? And it was, it wasn't even seven o'clock yet, you know? But I think that we need to look at this money that we give to the constables and the sheriff department. It's Stonegate, I think it's Stonegate, I'm Maria. Uh, Stonegate, is that Stonegate? Stone Garden. Why can't we have monies go to the code enforcement officers so they can patrol in the weekends? You know, and, and get people citations and still do traffic out there? Because they always, they go real fast, the trucks go real fast in those little county roads. And, uh, what, is there possible we can connect them to that Stonegate? Sure, can we work on something like that? Okay, would you please, so yeah, I think we, instead of having you guys go out there and patrol it and, you know, and sit there and we try to get some, maybe they can use our, use our own people out there to, to do it. So I think that's something we need to look at, you know, where we can use it, some of those monies and, and have them work, you know, two weekends a month or something. And because the only time you're going to catch them is in the weekends, you ain't going to catch them during the week, I guarantee you.
Midnight.
And, and nighttime.
nighttime.
Yeah. So, anyway, good job.
Um, and then just kind of going through, this, this is just some boats and ski dudes and somebody's couch that's, that's left within our right-of-way and we're out there picking it up. Uh, the next one is tires, tires, tires. I mean, we see that all the ti- I mean, of course, we see the rest of it, but the main thing is just tires. And people are good, being, not being, not creative, but they're starting to stack them up for us. Not for us, but for somebody to pick up. All nice and neat, you know, piled up. So that's, those are one of the major things, is its tires.
And you know, Juan, I mean.
Always tires.
I know we don't have, you know, necessarily endless resources for stuff, but again, if we could get a policy in place, then we could be more creative and innovative. I mean, rubber is a recyclable product. I mean, there are companies that will come and, and take this.
Judge, we actually have, um, and Tyler can speak to that, we've actually have some, there's some, um, it's not our money, but it's, it's that, trying to explain what we have for tires at least.
It's supplemental environmental project funding from TCEQ.
So they take them?
No, they, we, we set it up, we get the local vendor, but they reimburse us for doing it. I've done, I've done a couple in my precinct, I think so is Commissioner Gonzalez and maybe some others.
Oh, that's.
But that's, that's not a long-term solution to the dumping, but it can deal with the tires because that seems to be wherever we go, that seems to be the biggest problem with dumping tires. It's crazy.
Go ahead, Edward.
Judge, the issue is that, um, right now, we were working with the city of Robstown and there's a surcharge that they don't want to pay. And we're going to bring the agreement with the trucking company because the company, there's three companies that, that.
That pick up.
So you get an 18-wheeler, 18-wheeler's about $1,800, you get about $1,800 tires in there, depending on how you wrap them up. Those tires are then taken to the recycling place and they're either used for road base, they're used for fuel oil, or they're used for, uh, some other form of construction. So that's the avenue.
And who doesn't want to pay the surcharge, the city?
Well, the, uh, Degola.
Degola is a board that the court appointed me on. It's made of commissioners and county judges and, and me. And, uh, we have about $90,000, uh, that we can use. Uh, patrolling around and driving around and picking up tires is a model that they will not pay for. You have to, you, you have to put the, you, you have to be at a stationary location with the tractor-trailer truck. And you can, um, pay, you know, pay for the truck, pay for the employees, but the tires have to come to the pickup location.
So Judge, there's a program that I've been trying to.
We argue with them about having us.
Last couple of years, and it's been a tire buyback program, if you will. And so we've been trying to go through Degola and Tyner and we've had some discussion, but we figured out we necessarily can't do it. But it's something worth considering that we each do it in our own precincts or maybe as a county as a whole. So it's been done in, uh, Florida. And obviously their state laws are probably a little different and county control's a little bit more, um, laxed or more, or more independent. But what you do is you have a tire-back program. And so what it's doing is, I mean, you're not having to do the work. People are finding tires on the side of the road and bringing them in because they want to get paid for them. And so it's a smaller amount that you're paying than if you were to do maybe a lot of times a, a, a cost where you're working with another partner and then they're having to put in, say, $40,000. It may be only a $20,000 cost. So there's some ways to do that and so maybe we can look at that again, find some other, some other ways of how we can approach it. Obviously legally, I mean, that's a big part of, of why we can't, but that's something I've been looking at for a while now and I think it would really work. I don't know if it's ever been done in Texas and maybe that's why it hasn't because of maybe what statute is. But if we can look at that for the future, I think it would be a great money saver and people would know, they're conditioned to know, certain times of year, we do these buybacks. And I can guarantee you, the, the work that's been done in Florida, and I'll forward, forward you all the articles, um, they're not having that issue at all. So.
Yeah, let's, let's work towards that. Thanks for bringing this to our attention. Are there other, are there other interesting things? Okay, show us.
Uh, we also have some private property, just kind of want to add some more. And then, uh, public nuisance, I'll go through them pretty quick.
Now, we don't have any ability, though, on, on property, right, guys?
No.
Yeah.
No, we can't. And then this is just public nuisance on private property. And then, um, the combating illegal dumping, uh, we kind of, and then the, the next two slides are pretty much tied together. It's combating illegal dumping and also, um, preventing illegal dumping. And there, those are just some items that we can look at as part of combating. And then the other one is also the, uh, preventing, oh, I'm sorry, the preventing part. Um, you know, per, we, on our thing, we would purchase new equipment, uh, get some motion sensor cameras, increase surveillance, um, and provide alternatives, set up collection points, encourage homeowners to subscribe, to subscribe to county collections. And increase education, books, uh, the younger people, uh, give them some, some coloring books or, or do some presentation to them. Uh, and then the court enforcement attends Colonia meetings, so they can be part of the Colonia. Uh, and then combined effort of court enforcement is the sheriff department, um, and the constable and of course the public. Uh, and then the last one is just, uh, illegal dumping. Just want to make sure it's a crime. If you see it, you report it, there's our number. And then we're also setting up a website that's called Stop Illegal Dumping at NuasisCO.com. And that's going to be in our, on our website.
Have we got any signs like that? They're out in the community?
No, ma'am, not yet. These type of signs, no. No, this is just, uh, what we've.
Suggestions?
Yes, ma'am, suggestions.
Let me ask you something because I know that y'all give tickets out. So you give the tickets out, can you tell me how much money we bring in for code violations?
Back to Public Works or to?
To, no, to, to the J, the JP's, I'm assuming are the ones that get that money.
By individual JP, I wouldn't be able to tell you.
You know what, we ought to look at that because I'm wondering, what do you guys get from that? Because y'all are going out there and cleaning it up, do y'all get any of that money back?
You know, Commissioner, let me just.
Really?
Let me just tell you something so you'll know. These guys do the work, they go site and those tickets are set in the JP's office and they probably never heard.
That's awful.
And then when they're, and then they heard, they bring them in, they give them a talk to, they leave and they don't come back for the hearing.
So see, that's part of our problem are the JP's. And that needs, I don't know how you address that, but they ought, you don't take them in there and give them $5 fine or just let them walk out. We should be collecting that because they're never going to learn their lesson unless they're fined. Judge, is there anything we can do about that?
We, um, we have provided legal advice, um, but you have to understand, judges, they have their authority and they have the discretion, so.
Well, we can, we can bring it up, we have, you know, our, our judges' meetings and, and we can do that. I'll tell you what, let's put together, this is why I'd really like to see an intern in everybody's office, you know? Because these are all the extra things that really make a difference. I want to see recycling, by the way, in this courthouse. I do not understand that, makes no sense to me whatsoever. We want to, want to lead, lead by example, okay? Number one. Number two, let's work on this tire program, John. That's an excellent one and, and a one that should completely be, um, we should be able to track that down. Let us work on a policy to help you, okay? And yes, it's going to cost money, just like everything else does, but let me just tell you, we need to up our game on the beautification and the pride of our county. People want to work and live in an environment that is clean. It's, and safe, both. And to the extent that you could help me, um, I'm also trying to identify areas that are very dark that don't have the appropriate lighting, and I'll explain that on another occasion as to why I'm focusing on lighting. But there are programs that are out there where they can show a correlation between people having illegal activity, including dumping, and where it's dark, right? Where, where you almost make it amenable to do these things. So, um, anyway, help us identify, Juan, I mean, you obviously thought this was a big enough problem to put it on our agenda and you wanted us to be aware. And now that we are, I'm not going to be happy that I just know about it, I want to do something about it. So let's come up with like a couple of things. The first is changing our policy and, um, and how we're going to account for that. And then the second is, you're right, the electeds can do what they want, but I think, um, nobody wants the public perception that these people are getting away with anything. I mean, that's just not, that's not good for you as an elected. So I think by bringing it to their attention, um, is good. Now, I'd like to see us do a PSA. I think the Commissioner, you bring a good point, maybe we could work with our local, um, billboard companies. Lamar and Cooper come to mind, you know, in our rural areas or wherever you think we've got some pockets. And maybe we pay for the vinyl and they let us have free space. You know, try a six-month period, let's see how many calls we get in. If it's, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but.
Judge, what about, just an idea, because I think it's important that the city and county work together. And the city is, I'm sorry, it's just filthy. It's people, that's one of the biggest things, they talk about our city and our county. What if we got some kind of campaign together with the city and the county to clean up our city? You know, I remember when Joe McComb did the, uh, paintbrush thing. It was really good, you know, and I just think we ought to try.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think that people dump things because they don't know what to do with them, right? And they don't have the means and mechanisms, they don't have a truck, they don't have a trailer, they don't have a hitch, they don't have the money to go, you know, figure out where these things go, so they just conveniently say, we'll do nothing.
One of the things we have, right, regards to that statement is that, uh, the biggest thing they'll say is, well, absolute waste is very, what they will pick up.
That's right.
And so what they won't pick up will end up on the county easement.
On the county easement.
On their property for the next 20 years.
Right. Well, just like you tracked what's wrong, we can track this as a baseline and see if maybe the things that we do make a major improvement. So let's work on, sorry, Lotta, but it looks like that's going to get back into your court with the policy. He's, uh, 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 but you know.
I do want to add that enforcement comes with another dollar as well because obviously that means either my office or the DA's office is going to be handling it and that requires, and, you know, resources.
Another body.
Yeah, it's, it's easier.
Well, look, and, and like anything, I mean, we, let's look at the policy, right? Let's see how we can draft it, maybe it's an automatic, you know? I, I mean, let's, let's look at the code and see how we can draft it. You're right, all of it has a ripple effect, but let me just say this. I was just in Port Aransas last night and they've just gone through a Cat 4 hurricane. And they have made a major effort because they are trying to attract new people, new businesses, new growth and development. It is, they are doing an amazing job. It is so clean, it is so beautiful, it is so enticing. And you know what, that's why I went, because it's beautiful. People want to go to places that are clean. So you know what, we pay now or we pay later. But, you know, we're either going to grow this community in this county and reap our benefit with ad valorem or we're going to die on the vine unattractive. So we need to figure out how to, how to do it. But it's going to create, uh, a ripple effect and the ripple effect is, is the extra work and the cost. So again, a smart policy adjusts for all of that, so we need to figure out.
And adding to, Judge, I know we talked about the $12,000 or $11,000 a month. I mean, our budget is already, I was.
You're already stretched.
I told my sta- my staff that we're already, we're, we're, our, our budget for this purpose is done, so.
Well, can we find out if there, if, and I don't know what the law is, you know, Laura, but they collect fines. Can any of those fines go back to Public Works?
Again, it boils down to enforcement and where the money goes, who collects it. We still have to collect, there's a collection process. So we, what we can do is I'll revisit that and, uh, because I had gone through all of that many years ago. So resurface it and then you'll know where your costs are and then work towards how do you get that resolved? Before, before you have any orders, because once you have the orders, you need to have everything in place.
You know, and before, what you're going to hear also, Commissioner, is that the JP say, go ahead, and cite them and, and hear them and, and, and issue an order and they don't come back? They won't issue the warrant because the sheriff won't take them, because they don't take misdemeanors, right? So they don't, they don't issue the warrants. Judge Gonzalez, I have to commend him for doing it last month, he issued a warrant to bring to his court. They couldn't take him to, they said, don't, you don't have to take him to jail, bring him to your court. So they, they brought her to his court, you know, which was good.
Yeah.
You know, after 10 times of trying to.
If I may, and that was one of the things we have been working on. Quite a few years, we've had several meetings on this issue.
That's right.
I mean, we brainstormed over the few, over the years and we finally got Judge Gonzalez. I, I'd been begging for somebody, just issue a KPI so we can bring it to the judge. And nobody would do it, that was one of the things that was crippling us. And we finally got Judge Gonzalez that would do that.
And the judges need to hear this, your concerns and.
Well, they, they've heard.
They know, but it doesn't.
One reason or another is just it, it hasn't come to fruition.
I had to go sit down with him and educate him.
That's good.
Well, and look, we just had a, a, a regional county judges' meeting yesterday and my next step is to have, um, a Nuasis County Mayor's meeting. So for example, we just had elections, I'm going to call city, you know, the mayor of Bishop, you know, Robstown, Driscoll, Olusevangette, and you know, we all can come together. This could be an agenda item, right? This is the idea that collectively we can maybe make an impact, but by myself or by ourselves, we cannot do it. So, you know, why don't we tackle it as a beautification and pride, you know, Nuasis County Pride Project? And work with the small mayors, I mean, not the small mayors, the mayors of the smaller towns and, um, and see if maybe we can just, you know, try to make this a, a priority or focus. You know, if we start with tires, then we can go to scrap metal. Those are two things that pay. So let's, let's try to tackle that which we can incentivize. There are dollars associated with aluminum, there's dollars associated with scrap metal and dollars associated with rubber. So let's, let's tackle those three and, you know, let's see if we can make a dent. But anyway, as, I kind of want to laugh and say, thank you, Juan, for bringing this terrible issue to our attention But anyway, as, I kind of want to laugh and say, thank you, Juan, for bringing this terrible issue to our attention that we can do nothing about and have no money for, but we certainly appreciate you.
Juan, can we get a copy of that, if you can mail it to, yeah, you can mail it to all of us.
To make a com- comment on it? Yes, you're allowed to make comment on, on, on an agenda item.
John Medina, forty-nine thirty-one Mokri Drive. I've had this problem before, and I've talked about the issue with the city, not with the county. But it, it, um, yeah, actually with the county too, because I owe, I owe property, I own property in the county, and they're also dropping off tires where they're not supposed to. But I feel that the problem is, and it starts, a lot of time people have items in their backyards, tires. There's people that own tire companies, and they start stacking tires in the back of their, their properties. And what happens is that the neighbor will report them, and, and issue for them to remove them. But the problem is with the city is that, and I don't know, I'm just saying, maybe the county also, that what's happening is these people are not being made accountable where they're dropping these tires at. So you, anybody can load them up on a, on a, on a vehicle, and I own property, and they'll go drop them off on my property, then I'm going to be responsible for removing these tires. So there's a problem starting with, if you know that I have tires, and you are citing me, you need to come back and say, hey, we want to know where these, this is going. Because that's where it starts, you know, and then you're going to go give the problem to somebody else, and then you're going to cite somebody else, and you're never going to take care of the problem. So if, whether I make any sense or not, I believe that that's where it needs to start.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Juan, anyway, thank you. You, you've done a great job of presenting the, the issue and some of the challenges, and maybe we've helped to identify some of the opportunities, although they seem to be riddled with challenges as well. So let's, let's move forward. But please keep us posted, and, and we need to remind ourselves that this budgetary item is a serious burden on your, on your department. Is there anything else you want to add, or can we go on to the, I know the sheriff's been here, and. Okay, let's go on to the jail employee parking lot on La Pan.
Yes, ma'am, this is just a quick presentation on the, on the fencing for the sheriff's parking lot. The project was completed about two, three weeks ago, and I just have some photos, and to kind of show you that it's been completed. This is the fencing on the southwest corner of the building of La Pan.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this is the fencing that was requested, so where they can contain inmates if something happens during a fire or something like that, they can, they can have them there stationed there temporarily. Um, the next one is just some photos of the fencing across.
There's a gate there, though, tell them.
Yeah, there is a gate there. There is a gate there.
And then?
The next one's just the, the, the fencing along the parking lot across La Pan, and that's for the employee's sheriff's parking lot. And again, that got completed about two, three weeks ago. And then just kind of showing you in the middle part, that's our construction crew, the Public Works Department, putting in that hard surface or surface for, for driving in. I know that was one of.
And since I'm learning all about parking lots lately, remind me the, the surface, what do we, is that a?
On, on this one, Judge, what we do is we have some recycled asphalt material.
Okay.
What we did, what we did is we went in there and, and bladed it.
Okay.
And then put in about four inches of recycled material. At the end of the day, once it gets compacted, and once the sun starts hitting, put, I say hitting, I bet it starts heating it up. It's, it's, it kind of looks like hot mix. It's not hot mix.
It's not hot mix.
But it's, it's the, it's a.
Okay.
It's just recycled surface from an existing.
And before you go too far, Sheriff, I'm not, this is a bad idea for a lawyer not to know the answer to the question she's about to ask, but did they do a good job? Are you satisfied? Come on up, give us some input, because it's nice to know you were the recipient, at least of your, your office. You can. Talked about the gate first, that.
The, the employees were the recipient.
Right.
And the, the effort was put forth by the Sheriff's Officers Association, working with Judge Jag, and Judge Jag, thank you. And Public Works, thank you. My office had very little to do with it, but my employees are happy about it.
That's great.
The, the fencing you saw on the drive up to the Sallyport.
Yes.
Now, that was paid for by our inmates' benefit fund, because it directly benefits the inmates, so it's a legitimate expenditure from that fund. And the, the jail, I've been told, will never burn, but there could be smoke issues that would require evacuation. And I was presented with the historical evacuation plan, and it was, it was a dream. It wasn't realistic. It was not re, it wasn't going to happen if it ever needed to happen, and so this fencing on the drive of that Sallyport is a very realistic response to, in the event that we had to evacuate that jail. And that, that was very well done. I was a little concerned about the expense. Of course, I don't know that much about fencing, but it was very well done, and it's professional. It's, it's.
Good. Good. It's just nice to get the feedback. I mean, I know they work very hard, and they diligent to follow the plans, but you always want to know that the end user is satisfied, and it makes.
And appreciative, Judge Jag, and.
Thank you. Thanks, Commish. Okay.
That's, that's pretty, as good as it gets, is, I would stop right there and say, case closed, well done.
Case closed.
Juan, I never had any doubt that it was a terrific job. Y'all did good work.
Great. Great, great. Juan.
Item number three.
Item number three has to do with the Spring Gardens unit.
Yes, ma'am.
Judge, could I ask something?
Yes.
I apologize, I meant to mention something. Could I go, just, it'll take me two seconds, but related to the, the police officers is what generated me. Could I ask that we just go to public comment for one second?
You mean the sheriff's off?
Sheriff's officer, sorry, and I'll write on public comment.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Make something while the sheriff was here, so he could take it back.
I'll, I'll get it for you, Brian. Go ahead.
Um, and I wanted to share, while the sheriff was here, to make sure, I was just made aware after the deadline for the agenda, that this is National Correctional Officers Week. And so I did not get that on the agenda at this time, because I was made aware after, but I wanted to make sure if you could take back to your folks that we have not overlooked that. I will have that on, and it'll be in arrears under a resolution for the next meeting, but we do appreciate everything that the correctional officers do for us, and I am sorry that we missed that, but we will put that on as a resolution for the next meeting, and I just wanted to make that in public comments, so that everyone knew that we were thinking about them this week.
That's a good catch. Thank you.
Good job.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Sheriff.
And then, Tyner, if you can help me with that resolution, make sure it gets on, I appreciate that.
And I just want to say, I just appreciate you being here. I feel like not only structurally are our buildings connected, but, I mean, there are so many crossover agenda items. And I feel like when you're here, not only are you listening, and, but I just, I really do, I just appreciate so much the attention that you give Commissioner Court and the agenda items, and I know that if I call you, you're completely already synced in and looped in into what it is that the, that the item of discussion was, and you saw today, we had family drug court issues, I mean, structural infrastructure issues, I mean, illegal dumping, I mean, there's so much cross-collateralization, and if you weren't here, I feel like we'd be reinventing the wheel from, from the get-go, so as your time allows, it is so appreciated. Want to, want to say thank you. Okay, Juan, take us through to Spring Gardens.
Um, on this one, we're recommending the plat of lots thirty-eight, thirty-B, thirty, thirty-one-A, and Spring Gardens Unit Three, being a replat of the north, half lot of thirty, and all of the lot thirty-one, Spring Gardens Unit Three. So recommended approval. Public Works.
Any discussion, uh, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
In a second. Just to remind everybody, this is west of Ropsdown. This is in your precinct, Commissioner Modest.
Are you okay with that? I should let you make the motion, John. If you want to make that motion, I'll rescind mine.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. I've got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? That's the only thing I was going to note, is that just the location and for everybody else.
Sorry about that.
County Road seventy-nine. Okay, uh, motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. And now we have a dune protection permit, uh, Depac, okay, either one.
Yes, ma'am, on, uh, we're recommending, uh, Public Works is recommending approval of the dune permit number DPP zero-three-one-nine dash zero-one-P for the City of Corpus Christi to extend an existing water line from endpoint of Beach Access Road, uh, three-A, ending at the line of vegetation. We're recommending approval.
Okay. I'm just, I just have to remind myself on this one what the background was.
Okay.
This is, this already went through BMAC, right?
It's gone through BMAC, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Anything in, of note here, importance, Commissioner Chesney?
Uh.
We're all good?
Standards were good, so.
Okay, super. All standard. Okay, may I have a, a motion, please, to approve this dune protection permit?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Okay, and, um.
On the following item, Public Works is recommending to select a contractor to install the piping, anchors, connectors, hangers, and other hardware needed to repair and rehabilitate the gray waterline underneath the, the jail kitchen area.
I know this is very important. I know he had to leave, but I know he would say this is incredibly important. I've spoken with the sheriff about this.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I'll, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. And you're going to get on that immediately, right? Yes, yes, sir, Michael.
We're going to come back on the May twenty-second meeting.
Yes, sir.
With the ratification of the purchase order authorization.
Right, and you and I talked about that. We're going to proceed, but you're going to come back to us for ratification of the PO. I got you. Okay, thank you so much. And Michael, go ahead and stay with me, because you're up next on the Bunkette Booster Pump. And I got to turn my sights to that. This is actually an award.
Right, this is a discussing award for the Bunkette Booster Pump Station in Cindy Park. We put it out for bid. We received three bids, and without going into too much detail, I understand the recommendation is going to be to reject all bids. The bids came in a lot higher than.
Too high. Do, do we have, I mean, I'll take that, that, um, are you needing a rejection at this time, a call to action on that? So I'll take a motion to reject bids?
Right.
And then I have a question on discussion.
I understand we'd be rebidding.
That's what I wanted to know.
Modified specifications.
Did Juan leave? Can he help us on that? I was just wondering if he can help us, uh, help identify. Okay, let's go. I've got, I need a motion to reject the bids on the, on the Bunkette Booster Pump Station.
Second.
And I got a motion a second, and discussion. Juan, I'm on the, I'm on the Bunkette Booster Pump. Those bids came in real high. Do we have, I know we're going to go out for rebid, but how can we make this a better outcome for us? Are you going to help design, or what's going to happen?
Well, let me, let me meet with, with the engineer of record, and.
Find out what happened.
Yeah, and let's, let us find out. We'll set up a meeting with.
That'd be great. There's got to be some nuance there. It's super high. Took a look at it. It's way over a million. Okay, thank you. Please get back to us, because that needs to be done. Maria?
I just want to make a note that this portion of the project was going to be paid with Texas Water Development Board funds.
Uh-huh.
We have reached out to them to let them know how high the bids came in, so they are aware. Unfortunately, the process of trying to get probably additional funds for this project is ninety days out.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we will be rebidding at some point, but.
And, and we, you know, I just need to ascertain whether or not, is it that they know that the Texas Water Development Board is paying, or is it that there's a real nuance, and I'd like to know what the nuance is? Okay, thank you. All right, we've got, I think we already, help me out, Madam Clerk, what do we do? Did we already pass that? No, we didn't. We need to vote. So all those in favor of rejecting the bids for the Bunkette Pump Station signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Okay, and Dale, we're now going to look at some change orders and the financials.
Yes, ma'am. The first item is Budget Change Order Number Thirteen. There's only one item on the agenda. Uh, the district court required to do some more training because of her position as the fifth region presiding judge. Uh, this was money that was needed to be spent for her. At some point in time in the near future, we will. Over there is still this, this expense. The funds are available for this transfer.
I have no problem, but how do we get reimbursed?
The state will reimburse us through a scholarship.
Okay, I've got a motion, and I think, did I hear a second from Commissioner Modest? Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye of this change order. Aye? Okay, perfect. And now let's look at the financials for March.
I'm going to go through this kind of quickly, because I'd like to spend a little more time on the last item on the agenda. That's what we'll need to. So we're going to go to the, the first page is on page five, and four and five, which shows you our, our financial position for General Fund, Debt Service Fund, Capital Projects, as well as the other funds on, on page five. As we see, we're right at sixty-nine million dollars of total assets in the general fund. Uh, ten billion dollars worth of liabilities, right at a fifty-eight million dollar fund balance. That seems high, but this during, this is the halftime of the year, so it's about, about where we should be, and you'll see that later on in the graph. Uh, and as we actually go to those graphs, you'll see that on page nine. And you'll see, page eight and page nine, where you'll see some graphs of the, the last five years of how the changes in fund balance, and any fund balances kind of went, worked together. And you'll see that we're right in the middle where we should be, and it's always going up. Now we're going to probably start on the way down, because our tax collection is usually very, at, at the very beginning of the year. Uh, so it's not, not unheard of to have a fund balance of, of that level. The next one is always of, of our concern is on page ten and on page eleven, which we're talking about our, our self-insurance fund. And the one of, always of concern is our group health. Our group health right now does have a, a very substantial fund balance of one million, one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. However, you'll see in the next few pages, on page, especially on page twelve, you'll see that for the month of March, our expenses exceeded the revenues significantly by over two hundred thousand dollars. Now, we need to keep an eye on this, because we're getting close to our budget cycle balances, whether, and this will determine whether is this something we need to function to, where, whether we increase our premiums, or, or maintain the levels we are at. Uh, if the, if the same thing happens as it did last year, which is kind of similar, uh, we should still be on a very good positive fund balance, fund balance amounts. Now, on page thirteen, you'll see that our revenues are on the top, and our expenses on the bottom. Our revenues are about eighty-nine thousand dollars more this year than last year, and that is because we did have a small increase in our, in our, our premium. But the largest one is on, and you'll see interest income. Our interest income is very high, because our, our current interest rate's about two-point-six percent, where the prior year was like closer to one percent. So we've seen a lot of income in our, our interest, and when we bring the, the quarterly financial report to, our investment report to you, and next, Commissioner Score, you, you will see uh, those, those large increases. However, the concern is on the bottom, where we show our expenses. Right now, our expenses for this year compared to last year is one-point-three million dollars more than it was last year. So that's kind of where we need to keep an eye on, on expenses and, and values, and, and we know we have several people kind of looking those, those balances through. If we look on page sixteen, we show our, our tax, our revenue for, for the general fund, and you'll see that we're right now, uh, our year-to-date activity is seventy-nine million dollars on our, on our budget of ninety-four million, so we've collected eighty-four point four percent, which is about where we normally would be. And as the report on the bottom shows you, our comparison of the prior two years, showing a four million dollar balance increase. The rest of the funds throughout the report are, are, are where they need to be. Let me go through your budget expenses, and I'll kind of go through the few pages that show you where there's concern that, that we need to address. The first one will be on page thirty-one.
And can I just hold just for a second here? I just want to catch up.
Just get to the page.
Yeah, give me one sec. Okay, thirty-one. All right, I'm ready. Everyone else?
Thirty-one, at the very bottom, you'll see the Broadway Warehouse, the, uh, the cost for some of our maintenance is, is kind of high, as well as some of our utilities and costs, so. So we're keeping an eye on that, and it's, it's not far below where it should be, but it's still below our fifty percent threshold where, where we should be at the, at the moment. If we go to page thirty-three. On Department fifteen-twenty, towards the very top, you see Bishop Building, and it's also at forty-seven point nine percent, as well as it's, it's kind of high on some of its uh, supplies, as well as its, its telephone utilities. We, we're keeping an eye on, my, my staff's keeping an eye on it, make sure there's no abnormalities that we've had in the past on several other buildings of, for utility costs, and we are keeping an eye on, on those, those balances. The next one you'll see is on page thirty-eight, as we had last, last month, and we'll, we'll continue on. Illegal aid at the very bottom, because we had to pay the, the rent for the, which is on the very bottom, all at one time. That shows you why we're, we're overthrown. However, their office expenses is a little bit high on the process. There, there should be a little bit more room there. The next bounce we show would be on page forty-one. And that's the Hundred Fifth District Court. They've had a little bit of, uh, time in their, in their special personnel, which is their court-appointed attorney fees, is, is where most of the, the balances are. They've had a little bit of repairs that we had to have some of their, their balances for, and they were required to do a little bit more traveling. So we're working with, uh, Judge Poulter, and making sure the balances are available for him, and, and working through the process. Uh, for, for the general fund, that's all the ones that I showed that are, that are, are in deficit. If we go to page sixty-three, and sixty-two and sixty-three. Give you a time to get there. Let's kind of show you our, our comparison of, of, of prior year to current year, showing you, uh, at the very bottom of page sixty-three, you'll see how we split the, the balances between personal services, office supplies, telephone, and utilities. As you always know, our personal services is the majority of our expense. But on page sixty-two, you'll see how we, we factor it up between functions of government. And as we always know, sixty-one percent of our expenses are for law enforcement, as well as administration of justice. That's where we, we try to maintain our costs into the, the balances we have. Now we're going to go to page seventy-five. That's where we start our Capital Project Fund. Now we're gonna go to page seventy-five. That's where we start our Capital Project Funds that we have, and most of these funds are through certificate obligations. Yes.
Can you go back to sixty-three?
Sixty-three.
You said the twenty-eighteen expenses were thirty-nine, and then seventeen, eighteen were thirty-nine, one-seventy-four?
Yeah, three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand more for a current year than what it was prior year, yes.
What, what is this, the increase, decrease, three, twenty-nine, five, six, six?
Well, that's the difference between where the, uh, balances are. If you look, the, uh, increases, the biggest one is the other services and charges. And as we had the, the prior year, we had a large expense for some equipment that we had to, to take care of and some other costs to have. And we had some other settlements of some liabilities we had to cover for our, our Self-Insurance Fund, that you'll see is a, a service of a million dollars more last year than it was this year.
Oh, this is still for seventeen, eighteen, or seventeen?
Seventeen, eighteen was, was thirty-nine million, one-seventy-four, seven-forty-five for the same time period as we're talking now. And the current balances, we are now at thirty-nine million, five-hundred-four thousand, three-hundred-and-eleven dollars for our current.
Thank you.
So you see we're relatively close to where we should be in values, you know. Pardon me. Again, on page seventy-five, where we start our, our, our Capital Projects with, uh, balances through our certificate obligations and our debt services. I'm gonna go to page eighty on the same threshold, and you'll see a breakdown between funding sources. And why I'm having you brought to you here is the very top one, which is our two thousand and four certificate obligations. Uh, right now, we have two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars remaining, working with Estrada and Hosa, as well as the, uh, federal government and some other items. They want to have those funds expended quickly. So if you go back to seventy-five, look at those projects that have nineteen-fifteen as a beginning number. And that will tell you those that need to, that need to have worked, processed, worked through, through quickly. For example, Commissioner Vaughn, you have twenty, fifty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars available for drainage or anything you have for that particular project. Commissioner Gonzalez, you have at the moment twenty-eight thousand, five-eight-two. Commissioner Modis, you have forty-six thousand, four-sixty-three. Commissioner Chesney, at the moment, you have on, on page seventy-six, the, the very top, a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars of, of left to be able to spend on the nineteen-fifteen. So those are the funds we, we need to try to say, if, if you have some projects you want to begin, those should be worked first. To try to get those done, because as you, as it gets to point, as these get older and older and older, the IRS is gonna start looking at the, why have you not spending this? And these, this could come, become an arbitrage problem, where we have to start paying penalties on, on our balances.
And I'd like to just make a quick comment. If y'all would look at those oh-four C.O.s and make a note that when you get interviewed for your C.I.P., that, that you mention that, that you, you share that allocation, because you're gonna wanna use those dollars first for whatever infrastructure projects.
But that, that particular search, uh, C.O. was, was for road repairs, road maintenance, building maintenance, whatever would be working in your project. So it's not restricted to channel maintenance. But the majority of that, that one C.O. was, was for drainage. If we have drainage issues that you might have in your precinct, or some kind of a thing that you wanna start working on, I would work with those levels, those funds first.
Right.
Which funds first?
The one, the nineteen-fifteen, the one that, that we, we told you that.
That's the oh-four C.O.s. Page eighty is the total, but.
And the project number starts with one-nine-one-five.
Go back to page seventy-six.
What is coastal parks allocated? Is that just from, I, I'm not sure what that category is. I know.
That's where it was when we first put there. Like I said, the nineteen-fifteen is for, um, most of the stuff that was there was for coastal parks. I think we had nineteen-fifteen, twenty-eight, something, which we had, uh, when, when your main coastal park construction value that was used. And the project was just created as, as that. Theoretically, it should be nineteen-fifteen, zero, one-hundred, which is your unallocated funds.
Okay, cuz that probably should just be moved over to Ivy McGee.
Whatever, wherever you say, decide, however you decide to use it is your, your choice.
Yeah, good.
But if you want to, those should be the funds you identify first.
Okay, because.
Anything with a nineteen-fifteen, the very fir, first four number, one-nine-one-five, should be what you consider first.
Okay, I'll just need to go over that. I didn't, I didn't know I had anything unallocated, so I'll have to go over that with you, cuz I appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, the last item we want to talk about is our, our, our P-cards for the, for the period on page eighty-four. You'll see for the month of March, we spent three-hundred-and-seven-thousand, four-hundred-and-fourteen dollars worth of P-card transactions. And the next few pages breaks down by function and by departments on, the department starts on page ninety-eight, show you what departments used what and how it was done. The most important report, I, I believe, it starts on page. Sorry, I didn't get there. On page one-twenty-four, I believe. No, is it one-twenty-four? Yes, one-twenty, one-twenty-three. It starts on one-twenty-three. This is the year-to-date transactions, based on the largest amount of expense. So the, the very top, you'll see amount for Gulf Coast Paper Company of a hundred-and-sixty thousand, and it's broken down by largest to the smallest. And if you look at the very last page of the report on page one-fifty, you'll see for the entire first six months of the fiscal year, we spent two million, two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars of, of transactions through our P-cards. And these are the vendors that we use for. We keep reviewing these to make sure there's nothing that, that, that stands out and, and, and finds out, and working with myself, with Purchasing Department, to make sure that there's no abnormal, abnormal balances or abnormal transactions here, and nothing that, that's, that's stands out, and we've, we reviewed this. Uh, so for right now, this is the monthly financial report that I am submitting to you for the month of March thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. I'd be glad to answer any question you have.
You finished already?
Um, move, do you need a passage on this?
It's just, it's just to receive it.
It's just to receive.
I received it.
Okay, so we're gonna go and talk more comprehensive now.
Yes.
So if everybody will turn to the.
Blue book.
The green book here, the CAFR.
Mine's green.
Where's your mouse? Now we wanted to present you our, our comprehensive annual financial report for the period ending September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Y'all should have received this nice little blue book that, that says, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Very good read. I recommend you read it from, from, from beginning to end. It'll put you to sleep, I guarantee. What we're gonna try to do is do a, a quick version of what we're gonna do, and this is our, our little review to, to make it easier for, for everyone to, to read and, and to understand. So I'll go through this kinda quickly, kinda tell you what we're talking about. What we're gonna discuss is the financial reporting objectives. Our external auditors are here from Patella Brown Hill. We're gonna show our financial highlights, government-wide, means the entire county government. The financial analysis on, on the net position, which is the total fund balance for how, how normal people speak. What our liability is for our pensions, and then what our changes are on those net positions. And then we're gonna do some analysis on revenue, expenses, and then we're gonna do a difference on what are impacts in the future year. On the next page, you'll see what our financial reporting objectives are. And that's to provide information to determine whether the current year's revenue were sufficient to pay for the current year's services. Demonstrate whether resources were obtained and used in accordance with the county's legally adopted budget. Provide information to determine whether these financials improved or deteriorated through this, this year. And provide information for the county's financial position and condition. As you see, we have, have received a certificate achievement for excellence finance reporting, and this was for last year. And just so the court knows, we have received this award for the last twenty-five years. Now I'm gonna like to do, I'd like, I'd like to introduce our, our internal auditors from, from Patella Brown Hill. Mr. Manny.
I'm right here.
He's by, he'll kinda go over the next, the next slide for us and kinda go with, what their position are on the reports, then we'll, then continue.
Thank you, Dale. Commissioner?
Hello.
County Judge, thank you so much for letting me be here. My name's John Manning with Patella Brown Hill. And if you'll remember, in February, the county had selected another accounting firm to provide the outside audit services for the county for F.Y. eighteen. And this is the first year that we've conducted that audit, uh, for the county. Um, just to kinda go over what our responsibilities are, uh, the financial statements that Dale is going to go over are the responsibility of the county. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on whether those financial statements are presented properly and in accordance with GAAP and with the GASP. So what we were able to do here is, if you look in the report, we do offer, uh, an auditor's opinion report. And what we've given is a unmodified report, which of the four types of opinions that we can offer as outside auditors, this is the highest level of assurance that we can offer. It's called unmodified, meaning we did not have to modify the report for glaring internal control deficiencies or things within the county that would not have a good chance of accurate numbers being presented to you guys on a timely basis. So although that's only three pages, you issue debt, you do get grants, and readers of the financials like to make sure that the funding that they're supplying to the county is going and being used properly. We do agree that the county's financial statements for F.Y. eighteen, uh, will meet the requirements for the GFOA reporting award. This is a very huge undertaking to get that. It is a voluntary program. And if you look in your report, if you look at the tenure trend information at the back, that is a lot of effort that goes in there by various departments. And i- it's a good place to look to see how far the county has come, uh, in, in ten-year increments. Um, we did not have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses to report under government auditing standards or under the federal or state single audit guidelines. Um, we had to test indigent defense formula for the state programs this year. And because of the way the grants worked out, we had to test three federal programs this year. So, uh, we were very happy with this being the first year that we were the county, with the, the condition of the grant records and the way those items are being kept. They're very beneficial. They help. But there are also a lot of reporting requirements, and a lot of effort has to go into making sure things are reported to them timely and accurately. Um, we also did several, what we call fraud interviews, where we just randomly pick employees to give them the opportunity to speak privately if they feel that there are fraudulent activities or something that doesn't seem to be functioning the way it should be. And none of those reported anything that we needed to report to management or to Commissioner's Court. So overall, for a first-year audit, um, we think things went very well. We received a lot of cooperation from a lot of different areas. The one we work with obviously the most is with Mr. Ashley in the, in the auditor's office, and they were very helpful, very knowledgeable. And, uh, I, I think that's why we're here with a very good report and, um, have it submitted on time for GFOA. So we really appreciate it being of service to the county. I will stick around with Dale, should there be any questions, and I'll let him continue with the numerical analysis. Thanks, Dale.
Again, I'd like to also thank Mr. Manning and his staff, cuz we got started very late in the process because of a certain situation that occurred. And they went through very professional with what their, their duties were. They didn't put any burdens on our, my, my staff to, to, to do what we needed to do to get the reports done. We know that they will be coming down back here June, July to start doing some preliminary audit, audit reviews, which is a normal process through for external auditors. And we, we foresee the next coming year, uh, as a good, uh, process starting, and we, we plan to keep them on for as, as long as we can through our contract. Now we're just talking about our financial highlights. The county governments, the total, the county governments' total government-wide total assets and deferred outflows, which is our net position, exceeded its liabilities and resources by ninety-eight million, one-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-six. This was an increase of three million, three-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-four, or three-point-five-four percent compared to the prior year. The county's governmental funds, that's our operating funds, which is General Fund, Road Fund, our, our Indian Island Parks, or, and our other small little funds, showed an any fund balance of seventy-one million, one-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, ninety-five dollars, an increase of two million, six-hundred-and-five thousand dollars compared to the prior year. The General Fund in total, its fund balance is eighteen million, nine-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, eight-nineteen. It showed an increase of two million, four-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars from the previous year. And right now, with, if we do our, our goal that we normally set for, our twenty-five percent threshold, that means right now there's zero really available for what we considered unassigned as we work up on our GAAP, GAAP reports. For our general, for our general debt, our general debt increased by seven million, nine-hundred thousand dollars due to the state infrastructure bank loan of the fourth installment of three million dollars and the four-point-nine million dollars we added on, on new issue. Right now, our total, uh, debt obligation is one-hundred-and-twenty-one million, five-hundred-and-seven thousand. The debt service fund balance right now is one million, eight-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, eight-sixty-six, and it represents seventeen-point-seven-three percent of the next year's debt service requirement. If we go to our government-wide financial analysis, as you'll see, the, the, the table that we're showing there, it shows your fiscal years of seventeen, eighteen, and sixteen, seventeen, and shows you the differences. It'll show you which ones increases, what one possibly did, showed decrease. As you see, our current net other assets did show an increase. However, our capital assets showed a decrease. And that's understandable, since sometime we, we, we sold some property, we sold some other stuff, and we had some depreciation costs that were going there. So that's not unheard of. But the total we see, the balances we're showing, the increase of three million, three-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-four increase. Now, the big thing that we're talking about is our net pension liability. Our net pension liability is what we have available for our, our, those that will be retiring. Our net pension liability is measured as of December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen, and then we do several calculations on our side to get the balance where we, we need to have it to be. For this particular period, our net pension liability is nineteen million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars, which is a, a decrease from the prior year balance of thirty-nine. And these change every year because of their actuarially calculated and coming up with the values. Now we're gonna go to our change in net position, showing our increase and decrease in net position. Our net position from the prior year, as well as the balances, and again, this is just reporting the three million, three-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars of, of increase, making our balance where it is. Now we're gonna go into actual revenue calculations. Our revenue showing one-hundred-and-eighty-one million, six-hundred-and-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-nine balance of, of total revenue for this, this current fiscal year. Prior year was one-hundred-and-sixty million, four-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, three-twenty, an increase of twenty-one million dollars. Now that does seem a lot, but we've had several issues of the, of the, of the gain on sale of assets. We, we, we sold the, the properties in, for roads before that is included here. We had the increase of the seven million, nine-hundred thousand dollars that we talked about in, in debt service, and those are all also recorded here. The biggest increase is that you see, one of them is in our interest earnings. Our interest earnings were eight-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars higher than prior year. This is mainly attributed to higher interest rates we're receiving from our current depositary agreement, as well as investments that our, our investment committee monitors on, on a daily basis, our monthly basis. On our expenses. Okay, now we're gonna. You got turned off. For our expenses, we show our total expenses increased by two million, eight-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. The largest is, was because of the, uh, we, we have our, our agreement with the GEO on housing inmates at, at the facilities here, as well as down in the valley. And those based on inmate mandates, and those fluctuate on a yearly basis. And this last year, we recorded about three million dollars at the very end of the year to record transactions, and those are why some of our, our increases that you see in expenses, as well as some of the other minor expenses we had for, for payroll and other balances. Next little schedule is kind of important to show. It kinda shows you our net program revenue and expenses for each of the program. You'll see the green line is our program revenue, and our red line is our expenses. This does not include taxes. This is only our program revenue. And you'll see that it covers a majority of, of the costs, where the, as we know, the most part of our revenue does come from taxes. Our financial analysis on the governmental funds. These, again, are the General Fund, our Debt Service Fund, Road Fund, as you see on the list. You'll see our fund balance went from sixteen million, five-ten for a General Fund to eighteen million, nine-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, which is two-point-fourth increase. Now, we did know our debt service is going down, cuz we did maintain our current tax rate. We didn't increase it, but we, our, our requirements did go up, so we expected that loss. Road and Bridge, we're gonna work with, with their departments to make sure there was, there were, there was some funding process, and we need to work on the balance between expense to revenue. We'll be working that through our budget cycle. But that's really not of, of concern, because they did have a healthy fund balance, and they're still at one-point-nine on that. As you see, the rest of them are, were on a plus, plus side, except the Law Library, and we're, we're working with them to structure their, their, their revenue from their charges. The next one are a few of, of our pie charts, showing you kind of where revenue comes from. As you know, most of our revenue for the General Fund comes from our property tax. The other largest amount of our revenue comes from our governmental revenue. The other largest amount of our revenue comes from our governmental revenue. As you see, the rest of them are your rental fees, your other fees, your fines of office, and your forfeitures and fines. Now, the important one that's coming up is our fund balance for the general fund. This kind of shows you the history of the last five years, showing you where we were, and where we are, and where we would like to be. The blue lines are the blue bars are where we currently reside, and that little dotted line is our target balance that we try to proceed every year. And as you see in 17, for 1617, which was shown in the 17 here, we did show a significant drop, so we are right at $5 million difference between the two. We've increased this year, we're from 18 to 22, so we're still around 3 or 4 that we need to continue to work on, but we're going on the plus side of that. Now, we need to work on what our possible impacts are in the future year. As we know, the governor and the legislators was trying to put a revenue cap on the county. Right now, the rollback rate is 8%, but they're willing to change it, and the original rate, they wanted to go down 2.5%, but there's indifferent committees and stuff to try to get that, but we know it's not going to be 8%, but that could have a real bad effect on us. Now, the next one is GASB87. What does that mean? GASB87 is going to change how we record leases. Right now, we record operating leases and capital leases. Capital leases require a special type of accounting function where we actually record the asset at near present value. Operating leases don't. GASB87 is now saying that we will no longer have operating leases. We will now have all capital leases. What does that mean? Well, as you know, we have a contract with RICO that has 195 copiers in the courthouse. I now must value all 195 copiers and record that as an asset and expense. So that's where it's going to get a little tricky. And what we're good at. Now, also, we're working on the new bargain agreement with the Sheriff's Office Association and the Constable Association, and that's yet to be determined. So with that, I'd like to thank you and thank my staff, and thank everyone that had a participating portion of our comprehension on your financial report. John Manning and myself will be available to answer any questions you might have. As he submitted, as he said, we have submitted this report to the Government Financial Officers' Association for their certification. We don't see any reason why we won't be receiving that, and we will look forward to it. We also have another form coming out. It wasn't ready for this court, but what was called the Popular Annual Finance Report, which is a more easy read than that book. So it makes more sense, and it's easier to understand and interpret where our finance position are, and we should have that coming out very shortly. And for next year, we should have that, and we'll be submitting that to the GFOA as well, because they also certify that. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Dale, towards the end of the presentation, second page from the back, general fund balance by fiscal year.
General fund balance, okay.
You gave us the projected 25% target and compared to previous years. So that 25%, is that general practice? Is that, or is that policy that we've...
Every year, the court sets a policy that y'all, on a budget order that you submit, our goal is maintain 25% of our budgeted revenue, which includes transfers of the general fund, as a goal of where our fund balance should be.
How does that compare, though, to other governments, other county governments, do you know?
Well, because of where we're located, we probably, we were more in a need to have this emergency fund because of where we're located on the coast, as well as other stuff. Some of the inland counties probably don't have this type of a requirement. There are some other governments similar to us, but they look at more of a area instead of one particular point. For example, some will say, we want our fund balance between 15 and 25%. And if, as long as you're within that, that's fine. We've always had a 25% target that we have, and I know Estrada and Oso said that it's not wise to change it all at once, because our rating agencies look at that hardly, really very hard. They've looked at it the last two times we had a bond issue, that's the thing they dial on. So you're not near this, and you're at one point, and that's where you should be. So that's kind of where we want to be, and my opinion, we should probably aim at a broader window, but we want to make sure we work with Estrada and make sure we're not violating any, or making any alarms at what we're doing.
And that was, and I'm glad you brought that up, because that was going to be my next question, as far as how does that impact us in the future, because we already took a hit, and we want to go in the right direction with that. So as you, as we all prepare for the budgeting coming up, our budgeting session, our budgeting season, if you will, we're still waiting to hear or see what Austin's going to do on any rollback rate.
Yes.
But we, where were we at last year? Was it always, was it below 2.5? Was it below 8?
No, we were at 4.3.
4.3.
The one, yeah.
1.3% of the effective rate was 4.3%.
4.3, okay. So then...
It depends on where our effective rate is and where the court wants to go, depending on how that goes. Right now, the last year, our valuations were at $26.8 billion, so one cent increase is 2.6 million additional revenue for every cent. Now, our values may be going up, and we haven't received anything from the credit district yet. We should receive their certified roll on July 25 as normal, and as soon as we get those, we'll know where we're at.
And I saw, based on the prelim numbers that were put out in the Caller Times, that we had at least a billion and a half more in projected growth, is that right?
That's kind of how it's been the last two or three years.
Okay. And so is that an improvement from what we saw the hit?
Well, you have to kind of weigh this, you have to kind of weigh in parts. There, yes, that shows you an increase in value, but also, that also includes new property. For your effective rate, we have to exclude new property from the calculations to do effective rate. So we've been averaging anywhere from $5 to $800 million a year in new property. So if you consider that, we're only considered maybe $300 million or $400 million increase in value based on existing property, give or take a little bit, depending on how they all work out.
All right. And so the leases, and I know you were talking about it, but I was trying to write some notes. So these are leases, and I guess, is it solely equipment that we're talking about leases when we look at the GASB87, or is this all, anything under our...
They haven't quite come out with that hard rulings yet. They're still working on it, and they're finalizing the publication. I'll be working with Mr. Manning and his staff on how it is, majority of it is for equipment and stuff like that. And a lot of stuff that we have for small equipment, we never want, we never will take over possession of the copiers. We don't want that function anymore, so that's why we own this lease. But the way the lease is written is written as if you're going to acquire the equipment, which we're never going to. And that's where I have a dispute with them on some, not them, but GASB, on how they write this stuff. But we're going to have to try to figure out how we're going to do this, because if we have to record 140 copiers, and each copier's $1,000, I need a $4,000 expense budgeted, even though I'm going to have revenue over it, it's going to look like it's an increase, but it's not.
Wow. Mr. Manning, yeah?
They used to, they had two criteria. If you didn't, there was four criteria that if you met, you could call it a capital lease, where you would put it on as a capital asset, put it on as debt, and then you would pay the debt off according to how the amortization schedule worked, which mirrored the depreciation. So they kind of went all together, net effect of zero, and kind of just mirrored each other. Now, instead of having that criteria, the definition of a lease is the intangible right to use an asset. So if it's, it could be software, it could be a lot of different things that need to be evaluated and see if these need to be implemented in this standard. The one good thing is, for your operating, is it's just, it's just an expense every time that you budget. But with this one, every time that you do have to incorporate one of these onto your books, it will be offset with an asset and a liability. It's not like you're going to, like your pension is just a lot of liabilities that are dumped on with no offset. At least this will have some sort of asset to offset that, so it won't just go to the bottom line like your pension liability.
So it's zeroed out, so there's no gain, there's no loss because of the decrease of value amortization?
In theory, yes.
In theory.
Right. So the way it works, it requires you to record the asset net present value of the asset. So a lot of the equipment we already have, capital leases, like our heavy equipment for the road department or for coastal parks, that we don't want to do all at once, are through a financing lease. The last improvement we had for energy savings that was in the jail and juvenile, we went through a leased, at least owned, which we're recording at this. We have to record an expense of revenue, a capital lease and an asset, then we depreciate it throughout the year. The only problem I see with the copiers is that if they ever change a machine, we need to then value the new machine, replace the old machine, and do a lot of transactions that is, it's going to be a nightmare for all accountants, and we're going to start complaining to the GASB like crazy. But it's going to require a lot of stuff on us, but for us, we want to make sure y'all know that if we bring you an expense that's saying, I'm increasing my budget by $500,000, don't be alarmed, because I have a $500,000 revenue, because it's zero, but it's still showing up as an increase in expense.
So saying, if you end up having to do this, if Dale says we need $400,000 for copiers, it will be a booked transaction where we would also have a proceeds from the lease or some sort of revenue. So in that fund that needs it that year, the net effect will be zero. So you get the transaction on, and the only thing you'll see in that fund is the repayment...
Principal plus interest, yes.
Okay. So I thank y'all for answering my questions.
But it's not surprising, but you'll see a $400,000, $500,000, $600,000 new line expense budget that really is not an expense.
The other thing is, this goes for the other way. If you have leases, if people are leasing equipment from the county, and a lot of places have, cities have water towers where they lease the right to put cellphone things up there. You're renting out equipment, if there's other buildings or properties, those would need to be a lease where you are the lessor and would be irreceivable.
Right.
So all of that needs to be evaluated, but there's way less of that than you being the leasing.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
You know, I've got a question, Dale. I think in the last two years or three years, our goal's always been 25.
Yes.
But we never, I don't think the last three years has gone to 25. And didn't we say one time, the longest you stay between 21 and 24, 25, you're okay for the next three years, whatever it is? But last year, and last year, I'm sorry, last year when we were under 21, weren't we?
Yes. Last year, we were at 16.
We were 16, you know, and then, for whatever reason, we came up a little bit, came up a little bit more. By the time we got through that thing, we were at 18 or 19, right?
Right now, we're at 18, almost 19, yes.
But let's address the, not for whatever reason, because the way you got it was the sale of the road, road district number four.
That did not go here.
But how did you get your increase? You got it from, from...
The increase was from revaluation and refunds of certain transactions we had in the prior year. We purchased some equipment in the prior year, and we reimbursed it this year, and we got some, Road District 4 did pay for some of the transfers out of the, for the general fund purposes, so it did give us a million dollars of increase in that fund balance, yes.
You know, and what I'm getting at is, you know, we got $6 million from the road sale, but it doesn't really help us, because we don't have the money no more, you know, what I understand, after I talked to you about it. It seemed like there's only one million something, but even if we go up to 24 or whatever it is, it seems like we always go back, and because we got that cushion, it was always used for something else. So I mean, we, you know, here we are, killing ourselves to say, we've got to get to 25, and when we do that, there's a way somebody else finds to use some of that money, when we could have used it upfront before, you know, we didn't have to go to 25, we could have gone 22, we could have gone 23.
Well, that's what the resolutions pass by the court every year during budget cycle, when we do the adopted budget. Y'all have a budget order that says that our general fund reserve should be 25% of budgeted revenue and transfers. That's the goal set.
Right. And one of the things that we talked about was that range.
Yes.
You know, we brought that up during the budget cycle, and someone said, no, don't do it, it'll look bad. I just, you know, I think we have to do what's best for this court, and to me, the, having a range is a more practical way to do it, and just because we've always done it one way, I mean, we need to look at what's best for this court. 25% was kind of a number pulled out of the air 20 years ago, or whenever it was first passed, with no rhyme or reason to it. And I'm not saying that critically, I'm saying, nobody can ever explain to me why we came to that number, other than that's what the court's done for the last 20 years. And so what this judge has done is been very aggressive in looking at all kinds of new things in new ways, and I think this is one of those things we need to look at and come up with what's best for this court and this county now, which I don't, I still don't think 25 is the right number. I think you should have some sort of range that you should shoot for that's realistic, and this court should pass that. And, but, but, you know, I kind of got slapped down when I brought that up last time by, I don't know, somebody that said we shouldn't do that, because it may look bad to the bonding agencies, and it just isn't about the bonding agencies, this is about trying to come up with what's best for this court and this county. And to me, 25 was just kind of a number that we got stuck on, and it's what we've done for, I don't know, what, 20 years, 15, 20 years?
And we looked at several counties, not necessarily in the state of Texas, but several counties, and several of them do have a threshold range of between 20 and 25%. Wherever they might be, they want 25, 25, 20, 25%. Now, when we brought this up last year, because we just went through a bond issue, and our bonding, S&amp;P and Moody's were hitting on this hard, Estrada and Oso suggested that we not change our policy, because it might look bad, because we're showing, because our fund balance was going down, even though it's coming back up, and we hope it continues on the way up.
Right, but this isn't about...
If you're going down, then you're lowering the threshold, then the bonding rating agencies might cause that to be a problem.
Really what it's about is about having sufficient operating funds, okay? And we are in a hurricane zone. Let's bring this up with Estrada and Oso and have him, you know, I think we have enough good questions to do this, but the bottom line is, is that the goal is, is a great goal to have, because it's based upon operating days, and I think 45 days was what we had, which is not sufficient for a community of our size in a cat five type situation. So, you know, the reason you're low is because you've been taking from it, and that's the bottom line, and we need to get, continue to restore it. And it, you know, it's this allocation of funds, it's not like there's a, I'm not saying like it's bad, but, or that there's any malice or any, you know, it's not like a intentional malice, but when you have dollars that you see in 2015 go from 23 million to 18 million, that's not a good sign, it's not good for the rating agencies, and it's really terrible for our interest rates in the future. So it's something that we have to protect. I'm not opposed to a range, but I am opposed to the idea that we shouldn't always shoot for 25%, because the 25% is the fiscally smart, responsible thing to do, and this happens when you don't have a levy for 12 years. I mean, you literally went stagnant for 12 years, living off, you know, the effective, and that's fine, but you pay a price when you're not growing, when your ad valorem's not growing, plus, at least to meet expenses and to meet fund balance needs. And this is just a great exercise in showing a bar graph that is not necessarily the most flattering, but I think that if we can do some other things to create, and it looks like we're already ticking up, the best thing I saw in this is that our revenues are up significantly, and our expenses are minimalized, even though they are up by 2.8. That is excellent, and I'm thinking that, you know, we're on the right, we're on the right track, but I don't want us to escape the idea that the 25% is arbitrary. It's really not. It's really meant to show sufficient, I believe it's six months, is that right? Is it four months or six months of operating?
Four months.
Four months worth of operating expenses. And remind me, it's a daily of, it's pretty high.
Our monthly normal transactions.
Eight million?
Twelve million.
Twelve million. That's just tremendous. So you got $12 million worth of operating that would need to take place.
GFOA, who does governmental work all the time, their target is anywhere between three and four months of expenditures.
Right.
And it looks like, I was just doing some analysis of this, and it looks like y'all are at like 2.99 months, so just...
Right.
A little below, but again...
Yeah, no, and...
...the number that y'all are comfortable with.
But you know what I'm getting, and that's okay, but what I'm getting to, Dale, and you know it better than anybody else, is we go up with that number, but it's a cushion for somebody that was here, that was sitting here and said, well, it's okay to, now we can draw from it, now we can draw. So why are we, I mean, the thing to me, I don't, why are you working so hard to get 25, you're going to draw from it, you know what I mean?
Well, as we know, we miss the bullseye of Hurricane Harvey. We're always in the threshold of having a catastrophic event hit this county, and we know that our losses right now with where we were at in Harvey were anywhere from 6 to 8 million dollars. If Harvey would have been 10 miles south of us and hit it straight on, we'd probably be in 15, 20 million dollar range of expenses, so...
I can understand that, but...
Just to try to cover ourselves until we get reimbursements from FEMA, and FEMA drags their feet. We, as you may know, when we went through Ike, which was eight, 10 years ago, we're finally receiving the last payment from them for that. ago, we're finally receiving the last payment from them for that.
Yeah. I think $6 million is really like $3 million for us. We have the insurance and all that, but.
Well. Depending on how the insurance works.
And the other thing too is, Dale, to be clear, I think this court referenced what Judge said, over the last 12 years, I think there's only two years we did the effective tax rate in that last, in that last 12 years. So there's only two years of that. So some of that decline in the reserve were for unanticipated expenses that also hit the county that we weren't anticipating during some of that time, too.
That was when we, with the start of the Affordable Care Act.
Right. Which is some of the reason you have reserves and then.
Made about $5 million for health insurance.
That we didn't anticipate. And so it wasn't just because of the effective tax rate. It wasn't, it was a combination of things. And as soon as the court was made aware that the decline was happening, we started taking steps, albeit some of them were stopgap because that's, you know, what we had at the moment was stopgap. And that's absolutely correct in what you're saying in regards to some of that Road District Four money for different things that were paid for. But at the same time, we get that we've got to get that reserve up. And I agree. I mean, we always should try, but I just, I don't like the 25 number. I mean, that's just me. And I don't, I mean, and we can, but I think we have to keep strong and healthy reserves all the time, and we need to always be looking for that. But the reason you have those reserves are there are times you will need to use them. And we had to use them. And so we had to draw down on those reserves because of $5 million of unanticipated expense from things like that. So again, it's not just the effective tax rate, or it wasn't that the court wasn't paying attention. It was sometimes you got to use the reserves. That's what they're for. And then you got to go back and start building them back up, which is what we've all committed to doing as well. So.
That's kind of what, like the judge was saying, we probably need to work with Estrada and see their position of it. And maybe we come up with a window from 20 to 30% with our target being 25. And still, we're within our threshold where we try to get 25. If we don't, we're fine because we're still in our levels.
And if you backed this chart up, okay, which is not on here, but if you started going back, like, let's say, back to 2002, I mean, you're going to see a picture that's not a healthy, not a good picture, okay? So the truth is, there's always going to be blips, and you're right. All I'm, all I want to caution everybody is that your financial advisors really are there to guide you and to help you, and we need to listen to them. You're not, we're not the best arbiter of S&amp;P and Moody's. They are. And they are trying to tell us that we need to keep moving forward. And all of these contingencies and blips, of course, unforeseen, but not really. It's foreseeable when you're self-insured, when you have 1,000 employees, that you're going to have some years that are bad years. And so you need to be ready for it. That's not an excuse. And it's not an excuse either to have. I'm very sensitive to this topic. I really think this is something that I personally have a goal over time to see us reach our 25% goal. But that's not so that we can, you know, not use it if we need to in an emergency. It's really just to say to S&amp;P and to Moody's and to anybody else that wants to invest in our bonds that we are healthy. And that's really what, what the purpose was of the 25%. But I'm okay with talking to Estrada Enahosa and asking them about a range and creating the policies that would get us to the range appropriateness.
You know, the hard part about this, Judge, too, is, and I know you're in the same boat, none of us, none of us want to raise taxes. None of us do. But it's really hard when these financial advisors come in, or sometimes we're told, "Well, if you, if you pass the effective tax rate, there's no way you can build a reserve." And, you know, I went through hours of this discussion with Dale and Kristen at the time. And it doesn't make sense to me. Some of this governmental accounting is just not as straightforward as it should be, and it's very confusing. And I get that there's ramifications when you don't raise taxes. But, but it's really hard to be someone like we all are and not wanting to raise taxes, but then being told, "Well, if you pass this effective tax rate, you're going to dig into the reserves, and there's no other way around." And I mean, I just, I wish I understood, and I try. I mean, I spend a lot of time during budget, as we all do, but I spend an inordinate amount trying to dissect this budget. And I still, you know, and how the common person who doesn't spend the hours that we do can ever, could ever figure out this is beyond me. Talk about the gentleman who came and said, "So much is over your head." I mean, I spend hours and hours and hours on this, and I still, you know, have a hard time, you know, getting to the point where I need to. But there's got to be a way to be, continue to be a fiscally conservative court and not be penalized for it. Because sometimes it's almost like you're penalized for being a fiscally conservative court because they say, "If you raise, if you don't raise taxes, your bond agency ratings go down. If you don't raise taxes, you're going to dig into your reserves. If you don't raise taxes," it's almost like they're telling you, you know, "Shame on you for not raising taxes," when our constituents are telling us the exact opposite. And I know this is way more than we probably, but I mean, it, I like you, I'm sensitive to this very much so as well. And it is very frustrating.
But look, there's a lot of good news here. And I think for me, having new eyes from Patella Brown, not that we didn't have good eyes before, but Best Practices encourages new eyes from time to time, for five years, every seven years, whatever you think the best practices are. And I really, I think it's a, it's a comprehensive report. And it's also one that, I know this is going to be hard, but what I'm going to try to do with this is condense it into a two-page front and back that we're going to produce for each of your precinct offices and for distribution to the public. And it's going to be called the Fiscal Note in Brief. And it's, it's just the best information that I hope a layperson can understand and see, mainly where your taxes go. And the only thing I see, Dale, is, and this is, I don't know if you want to give a little credit to your, would you like to? Because I know they worked very hard, and your graduate student.
My graduate student, she's a graduate student at A&amp;M Corpus Christi, working on her Master's of Accounting degree. She had to leave because of a health, for her son. She wasn't, so she's not able to be here. But she spent a lot of time putting that together as well as our popular annual funds report, which we'll be giving you soon. That kind of broadens this down to, because that, our good blue book there is a good read if you wanted to fall asleep.
Yes, I know it.
It's too hard to get the bullet points out of this.
It's too hard. But this is really well done. And this is the first year, Commissioners, we have something that's aesthetically pleasing as well. So you can really turn and find your bullet points and your pie charts. And, yes, sir?
In the actual caffir, there's a section called the Management's Discussion and Analysis, which Dale's office narrates, where they take this 180 pages and pretty much give you graphical and bullet point information that's about 13 or 14 pages.
We can work with you on that, pull that information if you want, pull some from there.
That'd be great.
And that's, that's in the actual caffir. But for people that are, can look at these and want a synopsis, it's called Management's Discussion Analysis, it's very, a lot.
Very thorough.
Very thorough, and a lot of good information. I've seen some that are four pages, and they don't give you any information because there's not really any big time requirements. But their auditor's office, I mean, it's, it's really informative.
Right. Well, the good news is, we're all united in that we want to, we want to have the best, healthiest county possible. And it looks like, you know, our revenues are increasing. It looks like we're going to, I mean, thanks to the energy renaissons, we're going to have a little bump, you know? And, and when we project out post-five years, when all these abatements go away, even though you're going to see some depreciation, I still think we're going to see some really strong numbers coming forth. But I don't think we're going to get those really amazing numbers for five years. But hey, that's a great goal to have in five years to get to 25%. That's, that's probably what we should start looking for.
Look, if you, if you open up the monthly finance report, which was for a six-month period of time, and compare last year's revenue to this year's revenue, last year's expense to this year's expense, and see that the revenue increased significantly, but the expenses didn't.
That's right. That's what I liked.
Well, we're seeing that if that trend continues, the fund balance is going to increase.
That's right. And I do think that we still ought to be as fiscally, you know, conservative as we can, you know, within every department so that we, so that everybody understands what our goal is, is aimed at. Okay, this is great. Are there any other questions, Commissioners? Is this something that we accept and pass by?
Just for acceptance.
Just acceptance?
We've already filed the report with.
You have, okay.
Required granting authorities. It's already on the federal clearinghouse. We have a copy of this on our website.
Okay.
Copies in our office. Should anybody want a copy, we'll be glad to give it at no charge.
You know, my blue caffir must be on my desk. Is that right? It is? Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Received. Thank you so much. Thank you again, Mr. Manning. Really great work from Patella Brown. It's nice to work with you, and we look forward to, thank you.
Layer point, and Commissioners Court will bring the renewal for their contract up when the time's due.
Well done. Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'm giving public notice that Commissioners Court is elected to go into executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Vernon's Texas Codes 551071, 072, 73, 74, 75, 76, 86, 87. And we will be going into this executive session to consult with our attorney, including with regards to matters limited, I'm sorry, not limited to, but including litigation, deliberate regarding real, deliberate regarding real property, gifts, personnel matters, county advisory boards, security devices, economic development negotiations, and other matters that might be discussed in executive session. Upon completion of the executive session, we will return into open session, take such action as appropriate on items discussed in our executive session. And with that, I'm going to gavel out. I lost my clock here, but it's approximately 12:25, 27 maybe. I'm coming back on the record, and it's 1:20. And we do have one action item. And I'll take a motion, Commissioners, to approve a, I don't want to use the wrong word, a settlement. And then the amount is $2,186. Is that correct? And do I have a second?
It's $2,186 and 67 cents.
Sorry, forgot the 67 cents. Sorry. Hi, Cara. Cara, that is number B. It's listed as B. And that's the only action item you're going to get on this executive session. And we have a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. I'm going to run.
I'll be right back.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll wait.
And y'all are going to start the adjournments in memory.
Yeah, go ahead and do that.
Actually, Commissioners, in advance of our adjournment in memory of, Cara's joined us, County Clerk Cara Sands, and she wants to address the minutes. And please, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was called as a witness this morning in San Patricio for the voter fraud trial. So I was there, but I've been released. So I'm back. And I was, brought to my attention the minutes. Y'all had an issue with the minutes. Now, I'd like to give you, if you look at the item on the agenda, it was to approve the minutes. So the item was on there. And with the agenda, all you actually have to do is have the item. I don't have, my mom had that backup. But I did send, this was an email, I sent to Tyner on Wednesday before the agenda was posted on Friday, asking him to please go ahead and post the minutes with the agenda. I realized on Sunday that the minutes were posted. He failed to do that. So I emailed all of you, and those are copies of the emails I sent to y'all on Sunday, explaining, "I just want to make sure that you got a copy of the agenda," I'm sorry, the minutes, from the last meeting.
Why aren't they being posted on the agenda, though?
Again, I sent them to Tyner and asked him to add it. And I don't know why. You may want to ask Tyner.
But that was a Friday of?
No. I was in Austin for the judge. The deadline was the day before, 5:00 p.m. And by the time I caught up with my emails on Friday, because I'd been in Austin for the judge, the agenda had already been posted.
Okay. So again, I got the item on the agenda, the item. The backup I sent to Tyner, I didn't realize where he was in Austin. He's always been in charge of that. It's never been a problem in the past. Hey, just add this. This was the Wednesday before the Friday that it was posted. Now, I made the deadline of actually posting the item, which was to approve the minutes. It's the backup. Now, I sent, now, out of courtesy, Commissioner Gonzalez pulled me aside last meeting and said, "Hey, can you get us a copy of the minutes early, just so I can go over them?" Absolutely. So that's why, you know, of course, when I realized that Tyner, and for whatever reason, they just weren't up there. It's okay. Things happen. I emailed all of you a copy of those minutes on Sunday.
And we, and we got the email.
And so you also, attached to that email was the email that I had to send to Tyner.
But my question is, I mean, I understand, we've never had the problem before, but there's been two or three times that we've had a problem with the minutes. And that's what I'm asking. Why is it not on there? I mean, we're saying, something's late somewhere.
There are many times on our agenda where each of us have put agenda items on and then provided the backup later.
That's correct.
There was a couple items today, if you'll note, that didn't have any backup to them on the agenda, that were both from Public Works. But that stuff happens. And so a lot of times, we put placeholder items on there, and then it gets to us. The reason I didn't have a problem with them was because they were sent to me. I had plenty of time to review them, and I didn't have an issue with any of them. I don't know.
When, and I agree with Commissioner Chesney, there are several times when there is, the item is on the agenda, legally what we're required to do is you need to put on there what you're giving public notice of this is going to be discussed, or this is going to be, have action taken, right? That's all you're really required to do. All the backup, and that's giving you the backup beforehand, that's kind of a courtesy. You're not required to do that. Now.
But most of the time, we do.
But we do, yes. So.
Well, to approve the minutes, you got to be able to read them. And if you don't give them in time, I know you sent them attached there. But to me, it just makes sense, anything that we've got. And I've had a problem with that since I've been over here. Because we get, I'm not talking just about that. You get things in here, and you don't get it to right then, and you don't even have time to review it before you're voting on it. And it just shouldn't be like that.
Right.
Tyner, what's the deadline?
The deadline is 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday before a Friday posting for the following Wednesday meeting.
And that's for the agenda item, but you don't have to attach anything to it?
Until, well, you're supposed to attach it in advance, but you don't have to attach.
I can tell you.
Cara, you usually attach it, right?
Had I caught that, or possibly Margaret been copied, it could have been attached. Because I'll admit, it hit me on Wednesday afternoon when I was on the way to Austin. But by the time I caught up on all my emails, the agenda had already been posted Friday.
So if Margaret had caught it, had it been copied.
If Margaret had been copied, I think it would have made it on the agenda.
Okay.
Or perhaps it was brought up that y'all had it since Sunday. Y'all easily, y'all didn't have to table it. And I know that an issue was brought up. So I'm not sure why it was tabled. But I know an issue was brought up also that there's not enough information, or y'all don't, well, again, minutes are supposed to be clear to the point of just the action that was taken. I'm not transcribing the meeting.
No, you're not transcribing it. But it would just be nice to have a little bit more information on what it was. I know you're different, you do it differently. Everybody does it differently. But it's for me, and I know you're not going to change it, but it's for me, I like more information on what went on. So you don't have to go back and actually look at the video. So that doesn't matter. My, my point is just, I think the minutes need to be attached to the agenda so we can read them. Like, if I didn't look at my email, I wouldn't have seen it. But that's just, I've never seen a problem with it before, and I've noticed a couple, two, three times that it's happened. And that's why I'm asking, what's the process, and why isn't it being attached? So we can read it before we approve it.
And I'm certainly guilty of, I only send stuff to Tyner. I'd probably need to be, I'll, I'm, I'll copy Margaret from now on. But if I send some to Tyner, then it's always gotten on. So to me, this was an isolated incident.
By the time I saw it, it was too late.
I usually just copy you, too. I don't copy anybody else. But maybe we need to copy Margaret.
I just happened to be in Austin for the judge, and, you know, I wasn't keeping up with emails.
Well, look, I appreciate, it seems like we've gotten, as they say, it's nice to get the air cleared, nice to hear the comments and the background. And thank you all for really making sure that we addressed the issue. And we're going to take care of it next time. We'll approve the minutes, no problem.
Judge, I think we ought to just go ahead and do it. I mean, everybody should have had a chance to look at them. But, I mean, if y'all don't want to.
I have it.
Okay.
But I have, I'm just, I'll be honest.
Listen, don't worry. We can do the minutes next time, okay? No, don't worry about it.
On the record, it's a courtesy, there's nothing in the statute that says that you have to approve the minutes.
Yeah.
Y'all know that, right?
Yeah. I think you told me.
Yeah. Y'all aren't really approving the minutes. It's a courtesy I'm giving to y'all. I'm attesting that that is what took place. So y'all really aren't approving my minutes.
I think we can make corrections, and that's.
We want to make sure everything's right, and we did. So we probably need to approve them, whether we have to or not.
We're accepting.
Right. Okay, so.
Right, but legally.
Okay, so we're going to, we'll approve them the next time, just as a courtesy to everybody to have them have the opportunity to look at them. And at this time, we've made the action that we need from executive session. It was a good meeting. And now I'd like to adjourn in memory of, and with a little indulgence, I have another meeting that I need to attend. I'm going to start in reverse, if that's all in memory of, and allow our pro tem to completely take us home there. So mine is for an amazing woman, someone I really admired. Her name was Rosie Mirabal Garza. She passed away and was actually interred yesterday. Mrs. Garza was not only an icon, but her entire family. Mrs. Garza was not only an icon, but her entire family was, and they were involved in the printing business when I was a young girl. And they were civil rights activists, and when there was no way to be able to hear and speak the news, they would find a way to get important community discussions out in print. And Mrs. Garza was incredibly community-minded, civic-minded, she was a member of Las Doñas de la Corte in an, in an age where, for every Hispanic girl, we all know what that means, right? I mean, when there was nobody, absolutely no one, she was there, and she's the reason I got to participate, one of the reasons. That she always promoted young Hispanic women into the social circles to, to really display the best, the best of us. And she was, just as I said, an incredible person, Ray High School has a Miraval Print Shop, thanks to her and to her family. And I know she will be truly missed as an icon, as a great entrepreneur, a great businesswoman, and leader, and civic, and community organizer. So, I'd like to dedicate my adjournment to a wonderful lady, beautiful lady, truly elegant and gracious, Miss Rosie Garza. And with that, I'm gonna excuse myself, commissioners.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Commissioner Marius?
Uh, yes, thank you, Judge Pro Tem, Judge Gonzalez-Jack. I, I want to offer condolences to the Noyola family for the passing of Marcus G. Noyola Jr. I had the honor of serving with Jesse and, and got to, and we've all known the Noyolas for many, many years, and Marcus was a wonderful guy. And unfortunately, this is the second of the, the brothers who passed away recently. And the, the length of Marcus's obituary, certainly, even that doesn't do him justice, he was quite a guy. So, condolences to the Noyola family for Marcus's passing. Yes, sir, thank you.
I just wanna kinda, Marcos Noyola, Marco Noyola, you know, he has a history of Arino and Arino that, before that either, but I knew him very well. U.S., teach history, U.S. history, coaching sports at Freer and Houston and West Oso High School. His old motto was, uh, West Oso. They also, on Rosie Miraval Garza, the, you know, the Miraval family were very, very well-known family. The printing shops that they had, did the printing for almost any, all the social clubs here in town, the Hiferneces, and and even, they even created a coloring book for my program at that time called Buster the Bear, Say No to Drugs, a coloring book that they helped me put together and, and, and the design and everything else, so I want, you know, that, I can remember them for that. So, they did a lot, a lot for this community, very much involved, and my prayers and condolences to the families. Also, Edward Samuel Hicks passed away on April twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, a long-time businessman who loved his community and supported several nonprofit organizations, along with his wife Gloria Hicks, her prayers and condolences go to the family. And, and also Stella de la Garza, de la Paz, Stella de la Paz passed away April twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen. She was employed by CCISD for thirty-five years, and she will also be missed. Our family, our prayers go to the family. Renee Maria Garcia Palacios passed away on April twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, and she is a mother of Delphino Palacios, Fino, calling Fino Palacios CPA. And she was always very, very much involved in his community, the Palacios family has always been involved in his community, and they've always been, especially Delphino Palacios is one of the professors at Delmore Union College. So, prayers goes out to the Palacios family, and our condolences.
Commissioner, thank you, I also meant to mention Mr. Hicks, his family, Gloria and Charlie and all of those as well, so I appreciate that. I left his obituary in my office, so I wanna add my condolences to their family as well.
Anything else, or no other, no other business, and we adjourn.
Good job.
Time, gotta tell her the time.
Well, time is, uh, two, I mean-
One thirty-five.
One thirty-five.
Thank you.